Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the City Council meeting this Monday, December the 10th, at 7:10 PM. Mr. Terry, would you call the bill, please?
Casey Brown, Batson, Epple Johnson.
Here.
Rod Powell.
Here.
Daniel Daniels.
Here.
Tim Terry.
Here.
Mr. Terry Batson will be here for us.
Thank you, ma'am. If everyone would rise, please, our prayer was released. Our prayer is being brought to us by, I guess is a good way to put it, Shayla Hevero from the House of Restoration and Fortuna.
Father, we thank you for the privilege and opportunity to be able to come into your house to take care of your business. For your word declares that unless you build a house, they then build it laboring. Well, I pray to give them revelation, to like give them direction, give them wisdom on how you would have your city to be operating. Well, I pray to you bless every citizen that's here now, draw those from wherever, Father, they may be now, to where you hopefully be in this city to contribute, Father. I just pray, Father, that everything is done and simple for a new reward and justification to this community. And we ask that all be done in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, a nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, baby Seaver. Thank you, brother. Thank you for coming down. And by the way, I don't know if you will tell me, you have to stay the full four hours.
Only four.
Only four. We appreciate you coming down. At this time, I would ask the council, if you have not had an opportunity, take a look at the minutes. We're in November 8th, Council meeting. Ask for it.
Very much so. We have pretty much minutes.
Have most in the center.
Don Johnson.
Yes.
Powell.
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you. On your agenda, it is time for recognitions and acknowledgements. And this is a night that we have a few of those. No certain order necessarily, but if I could have Mr. Kleeson Cotton step forward, please.
If you have ever, in the last thirty-two or three years, been involved in either an accident or had an emergency of any sort, in Greenwood certainly, and I don't know if also Ashley County, is that, this man was there. And sometimes, not necessarily wanted or needed, I'm joking. I don't, I'm not one of those emergency service people, but I do know I've talked to several, and this man has been there on every call to help out. I know the last time I saw you was at the parade the other night doing what you do, helping with traffic control and crowd control and all that sort of thing. So, I asked Kleeson a few moments ago how long it's been, and he had to think, and I'm not sure he still knows, about thirty-three years, is that right?
Yeah.
Serving as our, yeah, what's your title?
Constable.
Constable. Thank you. I couldn't think for a second, which happens often. But I've got a certificate of appreciation for you, sir. And let me read this to you. And the audience, this is a certificate of appreciation from the City of Greenwood to Kleeson Henry Cotton Jr. And great appreciation for your many years of dedication and service to Sebastian County and the City of Greenwood. People make the difference, and one of those people is you. Thank you for making a difference in our community. And seriously, I mean, I've known you for a long, long time. You're always there. I know you're kind of hanging it up at the end of the year, I think, but I expect to still see you there, just out of habit, right? Thank you, sir. Appreciate your service. I mean, these days, who does anything for thirty-three years? But that's awesome. Thank you, sir. Thank you, man. Thank you, buddy. Next, we have some special guests in the audience, and I would like Mr. Evan Graham. I didn't know Evan Graham was in there. That's pretty cool to come up. This young man is going to make his all-famous here in Greenwood, late. He's got several talents. One of, I kind of like to see just for a second, and we'll back up in a minute, I want to see a little bit of Tarleton, just for a second.
What do you want to see?
Whatever, whatever you got.
You can go down.
Yes, yeah.
I was like that for about two months.
Give us a line. Give us, give us some.
Uh.
But.
Oh!
That's one I wanted. That has nothing to do with what we're giving you. That's pretty awesome. So you've got all kinds of evidence you can take, right? Just don't take politics. Just take, take one of them. Okay, I'm kidding. So Evan, this is just one accomplishment I know in golf, and this is a certificate of recognition awarded to Evan Graham Griffith for winning the overall individual Arkansas Activities Association Golf State Championship, and for his outstanding leadership and accomplishments both on and off the golf course. And I signed it in our city clerk, the treasurer, so this guy's going places. And despite his dad, I think he's going to be very well. Mom and dad's here today, tonight, and grandparents, of course. And I would say he doesn't fall apart from the tree, but that would include Stewart, so I don't really think that's relevant. Anyway, congratulations, and you're an awesome man. Now, I think he was pretty good at this golf, too. Yeah, let's see the picture. Let's see that ring. How do you hold that up?
This one's last year.
Oh, that's last year. So the other one's going to be bigger.
Oh, yeah. That one's coming in January.
Okay. Congratulations on all your accomplishments. Bless you, buddy. Thank you for coming. Okay. And I do mean least, last but not least, Stewart. Chief Ryan, will you step forward, sir? I don't have anything to give you official, because that would come out of the city budget when I do that for you. It's not going to happen.
Carl Ryan Casey's father.
Okay. Chief Ryan has been appointed by the governor, not to Tom and I's warrant, but we're also appointed by the governor to a couple of boards. But I think it's pretty, and Greg Cross, who's not here tonight, who's not necessarily appointed by the governor, he doesn't mess with the state, he goes straight to Washington with his business. So we've got some, and I'm not including myself in this, but two, pretty, pretty cool, to say the least, and to be noticed by the governor, and for what he do for a living. And I always say about Stewart, he does it for a living, but he does it because it is his life. I mean, it's him. This gentleman right here is former fire chief, and so there again, not far, but Stewart does a fantastic job, an honorable job. This is what this says. Governor Asa Hutchinson has appointed City of Greenwood Fire Chief Stewart Ryan to the Arkansas Fire Protection Services Board. I asked the chief what that was, he said, "I don't know." But here's what it says. The AFPSB is responsible for oversight of Arkansas Act 833 funding, the Arkansas Fire Training Academy, and regulation of minimum standards for the certification of fire departments. The board also serves in advisory capacity to the Director of the Arkansas Department of Emergency Management, which, with respect to the operation of fire services and the matters concerning certification and standards related to fire services in the state. I read it, and I still don't know what it does. But it's pretty important, and again, to be recognized by the governor. I think that's, that says a lot for Chief Ryan, obviously, his family, and for the City of Greenwood. So that's not a certificate, but it's a thing. Let's go. I did ask him at those meetings if they had lunch. He said, "No," and I said, "It's not worth serving."
Right.
I didn't hear a real thing. I didn't hear a real thing. I think that took care of that. And by the way, no, no, that's built for you folks, too.
I gotta go fill the paperwork.
Oh, yeah. Thank you all for coming. That's mine, okay. Yeah, you don't need to get it. Thank you, Reverend. Thank you. Okay, we are at committee reports. South Sebastian County Women's Girls Club, no, Kitty's here, so. You have a written report already. Yes, ma'am. You guys have, Kitty's here.
Yeah.
Oh, you don't? Oh, I do.
I didn't.
You didn't get it? November? December? Oh, December. I don't have it.
I didn't.
I got November.
Well, I just.
This is November.
Unless I'm looking at it.
After turn in a report this time?
Yes, ma'am.
That's a little easier than that.
Yeah, it would be.
Well, I'll, I'll make it.
Yeah, for the month. Yeah, okay. She'll make you. Oh, yeah, you're over there. Anyway, go ahead. And you got something you want to talk about or normally, or?
No, just for questions.
Okay.
Tonight's open basketball night.
Uh-huh. Gotcha.
Fun games.
We, and you may have seen on the, on the, on the agenda, you know, we've got the contract on there.
Right.
Mr. Andy's not here this evening. He was looking at that, and I don't know how much he's busy with you about it or not, but he's, he's looking at the contract just because they're up, it's due, and we have to take it care of. He's not here to library on it as far as that goes, and I don't think you've got to talk to him about it much either, have you? So, I asked the same question, and that's, appreciate that looks better than that, this one. So anyway, we, there won't be much there unless there's any questions about the contract specifically. I mean, you're welcome to say it, obviously.
That's on our next, but.
Yes, it is. Yeah. Any questions for?
There's a study for that, is that one?
That is the twenty. Yeah. And obviously, welcome to come, any more members encouraged to.
Is it this Thursday, or the general, or the next? Yeah, it's the next.
What are we doing this Thursday?
Police animal control A and P parks.
We did a little switch around.
We're doing chili this Thursday.
Chili, okay, good. We're setting all meetings up.
Yeah.
Why are they in that?
This part, the current?
Uh, no, fires, this one. They swapped.
Police A and P parks and COVID.
That sounds right. Time's all right.
Is it police A and P parks and COVID?
Thirty, thirty.
Yeah, COVID department and.
Okay. Now, you have a report. Do you have any, any questions on that, gentlemen? Any questions for Kitty at all?
Just to let you know, Friday night, we had a day for supporters, which went unreal. Dr. Rivers was great. Coach Jones, his first Friday night out. Paul, he was actually there. He was our guest speaker. Ethan Clark, I knew Ethan here. He's about two years away from major league, and that boy is a man. He, 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 Drew had a back out on us. I don't know if y'all have seen me, but he's got a new professional contract that I'm sure he's going to let out and everything. So he is not going to be there, but it was really, we brought back him. A lot of the old kids from Greenwood that went to school and everything, and like Terry Oldby, who was a cheerleader here at Greenwood and Yule Band, and they came and talked about volunteer coaches. Saturday night, with the weather, we still had our father, daughter, mother, son dance and everything, and it was outstanding. And then, of course, tonight, we start off basketball and cheerleading and continue. Also, talked to the state director for U triple S A, and we will be at least getting two age groups this year for state. So we're really excited about that, baseball.
Do you have, Kenny, I assume your utilities were twenty-four, three fifty-three? No.
Yeah, I'm there, buddy. Sure, right.
Utilities are kind of.
Surely your neighbor's not thrilled with that on their own.
So the folks know what we're talking about. There's an extra, there's an extra digit, which puts it at two hundred and forty-two thousand dollars. Okay. I don't think anybody has any questions for you, sir. I need help with basketball. Call Dustin. I ran. He's a good referee. I'll call Bill. Thank you, sir. SRCA, I did not see a report from SRCA. So we need to, Tanny, you will make a call to Lisa, the commander. We need robust reports. Parks Commission, we have, I know Nathan's turned in a report that Mr. Joe was here to serve.
The prevailing levels for, the name is thirty-one thousand, three sixty-five. It does not include deposits. A hundred and fifty thousand, so we're going to come up a little short. It's, it's a little wide.
Do you think the short, what do you think the shortfall was in the revenue?
Well, it was more in December because we decorated the pavilion for the trailer lights and all the activities. This, I'm sure they're looking for it. Whether you set the decorations in, that's the assumption.
I think December, even when I was there, I think was a little slow. I mean, that was the slowest time. I think, boy, not that many ladies in December, you didn't get decorated. I don't know.
Have you guys been up to the light, seeing the instruction going on? Like, looking, looking great.
Went up to that first quarter. By the way, the pavilion was wonderful, too. I'll give some kudos to Miss Tanny sitting out there. I know Donna Fladlin, I'm not sure who else.
Dan's here.
Yeah. Oh, Dan did everything. But it looks really, really nice. They even had it open, I think, real. They even had it open one night, I think, just for folks to come out and take pictures. I mean, if you need some Christmas pictures, that's the place to do it.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Waterway Florida Commission, I think Mr. Bailey is here tonight, and Steve Bradbury said. Sure, I have a report here, folks. We've approved our budget and awaiting the City Council approval in the also budget process. We met with James Ford, and I didn't really consider it to be a great productive meeting, but we met, and they turned down our offer. They have countered on just the burden property, the thirty-five point nine six acres, give or take. And they've been willing to give us water rights for seven-nine thousand, one hundred and twelve dollars. That's twenty-two hundred dollars, exactly twenty-two hundred dollars per acre. I calculated everything. We don't want to buy them in the next few years, all the way down to ten, about three hundred, I think, five hundred foot south of ten, all the way back there, and then all around, all the way up to Tinsburg, and three hundred foot quarter on both sides, the road all the way to Fort Smith, and a little part around the boys' club, and put twenty hundred dollars an acre on that, about six point one million dollars. I inferred that Fort Smith paid a two hundred and three dollars an acre. So they're willing us to pay ten to eleven times what Fort Smith paid. Now, it has been ten years, so there's been a little inflation, but still, it's kind of excessive, we think. So anyway, we're considering, you know, we're considering alternatives, but we're not sure what we're going to do. Because I think the second reading, hopefully, is tonight, the cost recovery ordinance for the Highway seventy-one, the utility running up seventy-one, first corridors. And lastly, we're waiting engineering drawings for bell edition sewer extension and the Highway seventy-one corridor between Walmart and Denver. We should be getting that probably early in the next year, maybe like this year, probably early next year. Any questions? I want to quit, when we mentioned it the other day, I know you weren't hearing about the state session, but I informed Mr. Bradbury and Greg and Tim, that Mr. Cecil had called me and was just not, just inquisitive, if you will, with the survey going on out there by the question wood. And I'd asked Steve if he would make a call, or somebody would on the commission to let him know. Again, he was just curious. I think, I think he, he didn't talk to him, but somebody from the school district talked to him, and they didn't know for sure what's telling about what, where things were going. So just, just to. I will find out whether he was going to six eleven, if they had not, I will make a call. Appreciate that.
Now, you've been mentioning about the rate increase.
Oh, well, we're not going to have one, are we?
No.
That was our, okay. Okay. Well, no, that was, okay. We had been talking a while about the need for a sewer rate increase, and we did a little maneuvering. We were paying a note out of sewer, rural sewer revenue, because we had the sales tax money. So we've elected to start paying the principal on that note, which is majority payment this year out of our sales tax money. Therefore, we're hopefully pushing the can on a rate increase in sewer a few years down, down the road.
What's happening is, what he's trying to say, I think Steve wanted to make, make you aware, that I presented financials to them with the specific intention of whether they need a rate increase or not in their water sewer rates. They've elected not to increase the water sewer rates going forward in two thousand and eighteen. They will revisit that at the end of next year, but he wanted to make sure you were aware of that. That's what he.
Can you put on this?
I know.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Okay, can we talk about that water service area thing?
Yeah.
Can we go back to unannaling Adam, your? I mean, I, I don't know what the right ways to do this, but I've heard Robert McKinnon go on about this a lot, and a little bit in his camp on this thing, that, you know, if somebody comes out, gets a piece of property, wants to develop it, who should pay for that? Should we? You know, you and I are using our tax dollars to pay for a developer to develop a piece of property that's, presumably, they're going to make money. You know, I would think that, that as you develop a piece of property, and you're going to sell these lots and buildings or whatever it is you're going to do on this piece of property, that that's part of the cost of the construction, you know. Tim and I paid our taxes already. I mean, what, what are we getting out of that?
I met with Jacob Burton Thursday last week, and went over some options, and gave him the opportunity to think about paying for some of that cost. And I don't, yeah, he pretty much gave it to me like I'm interested. But he also, we come up with broad options, you know, workout amenable things, us and James corporate's under anything, it's not going to be possible. Let them have the water, the other sewer, fire protection. Problem is, they can't service it. They don't have the pipe size or the water pressure to do anything. And Jacob's aware of that, Mr. Burton's aware of that, and so he's going to come up, if they, yeah, can borrow money to bring another line across seventy-one, they're going to service it. And I brought that up to him, it would be a lot cheaper to help, you know, buy the rights versus that. And he still wasn't very interested, but when it pushes to shove, he might change his mind. But that's only for him. Hopefully, we will want to buy a lot of area with already existing customers, you know, I wouldn't want to pay seven thousand dollars out of my pocket to bring the water a few years old. They might, making the developer pay might work here. Those would be further places elsewhere that that would work. And anything else?
Well, if that didn't work, then we'd be selling all the twenty-two hundred dollar lakers.
I just want to respond to Daniel's comment. Daniel, I'm, you know, I'm with you. I don't want to subsidize builders. I don't want to subsidize people that are trying to profit and make money. We shouldn't. We shouldn't have to do that. But that's what we're going into with cost recovery ordinance. And that cost recovery is, it's also, we know it's an impact fee. That's an impact fee. This cost recovery ordinance is an impact fee. And that keeps us, the citizens who've been here, who are a little more labor, lives on bash degree air, and paying and subsidizing these developers. The other way to do it is like we make the residential developers, you go out, you put it in, you pay for it, and then you incorporate it in the cost of your lots that you sell. But that's a little burdensome on some different types of commercial activity, like what we've done down Tinsburg. And this is a way to do it and get, have the, have the city ability to grow, but not solicit these people. Where we failed in the past is we set up these cost recovery ordinances. And in the beginning, back when me and you started, it was a RICU ordinance, the RICU fee. And what happens is somebody's buddy walks in, and somebody kind of gets around it. And next thing you know, you're in this deal where, well, he got his for free, how do I get ours for free?
And then it's up in lawsuits, is what it is.
And it opens up the potential for a lawsuit. That's where, when we pass a law, we've got to be diligent enough. They will revisit that at the end of next year, but he wanted to make sure you were aware of that. That's what he.
He's been on this. Thank you, Tony.
Okay, can we talk about that water service area thing?
Yeah.
Can we go back to unannaling that and your. I mean, I, I don't know what the right ways to do this, but I've heard Robert McKinnney go on about this a lot. A little bit in his camp on this thing that, you know, if somebody comes out and gets a piece of property, wants to develop it, who should pay for that? Should we? You and I are using our tax dollars to pay for a developer to develop a piece of property that's, presumably, they're going to make money. You know, I would think that as you develop a piece of property and you're going to sell these lots and buildings or whatever it is you're going to do on this piece of property, that, that's part of the cost of the construction. Tim and I paid our taxes already, I mean, what are we getting out of that?
I met with Jacob Burton Thursday last week and went over some options and gave him the opportunity to think about paying for some of that cost. And I don't, yeah, he pretty much gave it to us, I'm not interested. But, but he also, we come up with broad options, you know. Work out amenable things, us and James Fork, it's under anything, it's not going to be possible. Let them have the water, build their sewer, fire protection. Problem is, they can't service it. They don't have the pipe size or the water pressure to do anything. And Jacob's aware of that, Mr. Burton's aware of that, and so he's going to come up. If they, yeah, can borrow money to bring another line across 71, they're going to service it. And I brought that up to him, it would be a lot cheaper to help, you know, buy the rights versus that. He still wasn't very interested, but when it pushes to shove, he might reconsider that. So that's, we already just got to have discussed that, and.
We think he'll pay the water rights, it'd be a whole lot cheaper than.
Yeah, play a line in the structure. We looked at some cost, actually running a water line across, you know, four lanes of 71 there, or a little further down, but general area, and we were between 90, 110,000, somewhere in that neighborhood. Run a water lining up, you know, all the way across 71. I, I told him, that's what we thought it would be, so that neighborhood, you know, come maybe 50,000, 79,000, it would be a lot cheaper, 100 plus all the other things they might have to do. And he still didn't seem too interested, but when push goes to shove, he might change his mind. But that's only for him. Hopefully, we will want to buy a lot of area with our already existing customers, you know. I wouldn't want to pay $7,000 out of my pocket to bring the water here, so. It might, making the developer pay might work here. Those would be further places elsewhere that that would work. Anything else?
Well, if that didn't work, then we would be selling all the $2,200 later.
I just want to respond to Daniel's comment. Daniel, I'm, you know, I'm with you. I don't want to subsidize builders. I don't want to subsidize people that are trying to profit and make money. We shouldn't. We shouldn't have to do that. But that's what we're going into, the cost recovery ordinance. And that cost recovery is, it's also, we know it's an impact fee. That's an impact fee. This cost recovery ordinance is an impact fee. And that keeps us, the citizens who've been here, who are a little more labor, lives on bash, regrade air, paying and subsidizing these developers. The other way to do it is like we make the residential developers, you go out and you put it in, you pay for it, and then you incorporate it in the cost of your lots that you sell. But that's a little burdensome on some different types of commercial activity, like what we've done down Tinsburg. And this is a way to do it and get, have the city, have the city ability to grow, but not subsidize these people. Where we failed in the past is we set up these cost recovery ordinances, and in the beginning, back when me and you started, it was a recoup ordinance, a recoup fee. And what happens is somebody's buddy walks in and somebody kind of gets around it. Next thing you know, you're in this deal where, well, he got his for free, how do I get ours for free?
And then it's all in lawsuits, is what it is.
And it opens up the potential for a lawsuit. That's where, when we pass a law, we've got to be diligent enough to, it's the law, that's what it costs. And I think.
I mean, I think there's, obviously, you know, it's good for the city to develop, whether it's residential or commercial, either way, I mean, we want to have development. We would love, as a city, for that corner to be developed into retail space that brought growth to the city and brought sales tax revenue to the city. That's, that's what we want, but.
You know, but I don't mind doing a, you know, a recoup fee, a cost recovery ordinance, all, all known as an impact fee. I don't mind doing that as long as the administration follows through and upholds the ordinance and holds the law, upholds the oath that they swore to uphold. But even this last time turned into a mess. I mean, we had a guy that's in river state business on planning commission. He went out and told everybody they made a mistake. You got 30 days, get down there and pay $100 and get your.
That's why we're doing it before we start to dig it up, so that won't happen again. We learned, we learned an important lesson.
But you know, I mean, I don't see, I don't see practically a difference in our paying, you know, $79,000 to buy the water rights or paying $79,000 so Dr. Rowe can open a new office. I'll build you the office. Everybody go, well, that's crazy. You can't go there. What's the difference? I'm going to use your tax dollars to benefit the new business.
But, you know, I mean, like, let's, my house, I'm, I got a house, I got 19 some odd acres. And what you, what you're saying would work fine for, well, it could be a very viable alternative. If you just tell Mr. Burton, you've got to do this, and I say, as I say, it might work that way. Let's say someone like me going up the road, I've got a house, 19 little 19 acres. Well, from the previous things, for a, for a new customer, one time he went $6,900 and they went up on their total. We don't know if the price per customer went up or not, but $6,900 for me, adding three acres of that, and my other 16 acres, would be what, $19,200? I have to pay $26,000 if we're going to start servicing my water. I would not do that. So it would work. In the burden, it might be an alternative, but going forward, wherever we go, that will not work. We've got to, we've got to get a reasonable cost out of it. And we're living in Fort Smith. I, I talked to Fort Smith, still with Fort Smith, and their members are a little funny, all people change hands, and, but it. They exist, what used to be a James Fork loan, they paid it for 10 years, got seven years to go, so 17 or 18 years of payments, $9,000, $1,000 a year. I can't even remember enough front lump payment to begin, but they're paying. So if there was no lump sum, lump sum upfront payment, about $1.7, $1.8 million over 18, 17, 18 years, they want a heck of a lot more for us. And they got it like that. I talked to their, they got our, their version of Tim Posey, a guy named Jimmy Johnson, and they got over 1,000 existing customers. That's telling me they didn't pay much more than about $1,000, because they may have had over six, seven times for us.
The other option you got, I suppose, here as well, what we've got out here off of Water Road, that was built down service area, exact same scenario. It was their service area, they didn't have the infrastructure. And we couldn't come to an agreement that they sell us the water service area or that they bring the infrastructure. So what happened was, we ended up getting the water service area and we're charging the residents 25% surcharge for, was it 15, 14, 15, 40 years?
40 years, but.
Also a lump sum upfront by the contract asset. I mean, I thought the whole thing was kind of sour bill when we did it, always have, but, but the point is, we buy the water service area and whoever develops on that property is going to have to pay a surcharge to the city, to Rod's point, to recover our cost.
Yeah, we can recover it on a hookup fee or we recover it on an increased gap, you know, monthly fee, you know. We've, we've kind of thought about.
Which is just a, I don't know, a little bit of.
Yeah. And same thing, James Fork's prices are higher than ours. I have not seen their rate structure, but I know they're higher than ours. So if we go out and buy people in the rural areas, we might be charging them, you know, something close to what they're paying now and have a little extra, you know, because they, they wouldn't be paying anymore, but we'd be charging them more. That's, that's an option, but. We don't want to have two people, cross street, and one pays X, one pays Y, and there would be ghosts in between. Anything else?
Thank you, Mr. Bailey. I, I would suggest to council, and I know nobody likes any more meetings than what we already have, but I would, I would like for us to have a study session at some point on this topic, on this topic only. We are at a, pardon the cliche, a crossroads of either getting bigger or not getting bigger. And I think it's huge that we, that we make the right decision and how to approach it. There's, there's options, I think, it sounds like. I know Sonny has reached out and asked him to continue to reach out to communities. I know we're not about doing like other people do necessarily, but sometimes we try to create something we don't have to. We can reach out, and I'm talking in a economic development sense, if you will, and you touched on that. You all know how important that is, that if we just lock down and say we're not doing this for no, for no amount of money. We're not going to, you know, we don't have to get bigger. We can be at this size and be happy, but I think it's coming and we need to be prepared for it. So I, I would just suggest that we get together, get our heads together at some point and sit down and talk about it and track them up at a legal plan, because it's a, it's a.
It's a big deal. Some of us in the water commission might be there, but.
Absolutely. I would encourage it. Yeah, I would want water sewer, you guys, you know, really everybody, the street, everybody that's involved, and you extend out, I mean, I, I think it works fairly well, or I think it works well when we extend lines out, extend, I mean, 71 as it is, you know, here they came, and some people come in. Would they have already come anyway? I don't know. They would be where they are now. But we got our money back, I think, from tractor supply, so, right. So we've done, we, you guys have done some good things, and that precedents success. I, I understand what you're saying, you can't just go out and build, you know, is that in here? Did you need a new building? Is that what that's about?
We're working on that.
We're working on it, so, and I know everybody's on the same page, I think, about trying to get things going and make progress.
Well, I mean, to Rod, if a developer went out past Donna and I's house, out there in that field, and decided, we're going to develop this land and build 60 houses on it, we would say, well, you're going to have to go put your infrastructure in.
Well, and I think Mr. Burke was, and I feel like I'm always taken out for it, and he's a pretty good, quick, where, where did you go? He's pretty quick to say no when it comes to putting.
No, I told you in the meeting, I got so much time to think about it.
Yeah.
He took about five seconds.
Yeah, and that's Jacob's personality, but he's going to have to come to some realization too, that things cost money. I know we know that, but the fact that he's already, here's, I think, what's a little different. I mean, not to say we should do it different. He's already there, and we're, we need to go that way. Happening to be, go that way and beyond, as we know. So, you know, if we were just, if he wasn't there and nobody was doing anything with that land, and said, you know what, let's go to Beryl Road or the next road up with, with our infrastructure, because that's what we want. And then he comes along and says, oh, by the way, I want to do this, we would be looking at these recoup fees since you've got spilt out here. That's how, I, I think we need to get our heads together and come up with a real plan.
What's riding out to keep us from annexing the land is what I, I mean, why?
We, we are in the process, Sonny can touch on that better than I can, that all the information, the corridor has been sent to GIS, correct?
Yes.
Mr. Bell, and GIS has informed us, I think, back to us, we waited a long time, we thought it was kind of, they were doing it. You have to do that now. The laws, that's the law, that they have to get this squared away for you. Sonny, just tell me when I'm wrong, or you can tell them that GIS has come back and said, we need the judge to approve this. They need the judge to approve this before they go much farther. Is that accurate?
It used to be the other way around.
Yeah.
But now the new law and the GIS people got involved with it. So you send them your information with the legal description, and they supposedly were, would look at your legal description and say, yes, this is a true legal description of what you want to annex. And then you go to the judge and you say, Judge, you know, we want to annex this land, and they, they agree to it or not. And then you have an election. Well, they changed the rules, and instead of, before they say, yes, this is a true description of the land, they said, we need to have a, a meeting with the judge and get his approval before they go further on it. So they don't want to waste time, or they don't want to spend the time on it, and then the judge says, no, because he can't.
Yeah.
Well, I've been here for 15, 18 months, and Burke's ready to be annexed, he wants to be annexed, and kind of like everything else, we wait, the price goes up on the entire station, but here we waited, the laws have changed. And I don't really feel like we need to be talking about how much we're going to pay for water or land or whatever, we don't know. I mean, it needs to be the city green, but I don't care if just a quarter, 35 point whatever acres, or the whole corridor or whatever. And then we'll worry about how much we're going to spend on it, because I hate to sit here and barter and complain and whine with the James Fork guys who are never going to come down where we want to. We don't even have the property, and what's.
We're, we're waiting in the process.
In the case of the Burton property, that would be an easy fix. All we need is, is Jacob to say, I want in, and like him, he would fill out the paperwork, it'd go to the judge. We're talking, you know, one section. Well, why send them was a complete corridor, and that throws red flags out that we're making land rent. Well, you know, because we're not going for Shadow Lake along with this. We're just getting a corridor. But Dan Von Gudmund told the mayor and I, says, you know, you didn't specify that you're trying to control the gateway to your city, whether it's got commercial, residential, whatever on there. And so that's the way I approached it, that this was a gateway annexation. Well, they, they look at it and they say, now, now, you know, you're, looks like you're just trying to get all the businesses on there. Well, yeah, but again, we don't want a triple X store sitting there on the other side of Burton's property. But right now, it could be. But in the case of Burton's property, it, it would be a simple matter. The matter, the thing that holds us up is, if that came into the city and then a large development says, hey, we like that property, and Burton's, whoever owns it says, we can't supply water for, for the use and fire protection. You know, we could, the city could run a, a fire hydrant over there, but what if it was a large water user? Well, James Fork might not be able to provide that, and we know James Fork can't provide fire protection. So that's kind of, those two things are what's holding that up.
Has Burton requested to be in the city? No?
He is ready to as soon as the water issue is settled.
He, he's kind of sitting back too.
And I would. I'm not kidding, I mean, we're not going to settle the water until you're in the city, and he never.
And he knows, yeah, he knows they can't get our water unless it's in the city, but, but right now, they're telling him that if you come to the city, you can't get enough water to do what you want to do unless you come into the city, you know.
Unless you tell the land, people to buy the land or want to develop, they can pay for it.
Exactly.
And they can do what they want.
Yeah, and, and going back to, going back to Rod's point, if Holiday Inn came in and say, we want this big patch of land right here, you know, it's kind of like a tractor supply, we don't care what it costs. We are willing to go in on this to get our project up there, but if you're going in there with a mom and pop store or something like that, they can't afford it, so that, you know, it's a, it's a messed up deal.
I, I have spoken to Jacob many times about annexation, many times. And he, he's kind of shuts down, not really like he does on, on the paint or stuff, but he, he says he's willing to, he says he wants to. I went as far as got getting him, like he couldn't do himself, but he was concerned about his property taxes once he became in the city, which was, there is a difference, there is definitely a difference. So I got him, I think they discussed it, Zach Johnson was going to talk to him and give him the ins and outs and how that worked, and if the county could even help him with that, and they, there's kind of a plan that you can, they can help him with that. So his money, his issue is money. I'm going to just tell you that right now, money for anything. Because he, but that's not an excuse, that's just, that's what it is.
I would consider, say, we're not going to expend any more energy or time.
Well, the city has done, the city has done that, and from here, I would, I would suggest, and I'm not, I would ask, and can very much suggest that each one of you visit with them out there and get your own answers from them and see what, you know, as far as the annexation goes. I would, to encourage him to do that.
If you ever have to meet with James Fork again, please don't talk about hotels and big apartment buildings. Please talk about being dirted up and going in.
I understand. Chief?
The person that controls the water rights controls everything. We annex it, they can still say they have water rights and they don't want to provide the fire protection. And then, then he's, you know, he's out of luck. But if we own the water rights, it doesn't matter who goes there. We're in control of what they put there, because I'm not going to be able to get drinking water or sewer without our permission through the COVID.
It's a give and take.
So if we own the water rights, that's the key to everything, those areas.
You're still assuming we're going to pay to put the pipes in the ground because we have the water rights. Instead of putting the.
I guess we make those choices ourselves, of what they're going to do.
Well, you can.
If you don't have the water rights, they can tell you, they can say, well, we're going to get water from them, and then. Well, they might have control of that, but we own the water rights.
We put the pipes in the ground, am I wrong? We put the pipes in the ground at the tractor supply, to 71, on the other side of the road, with the expectation of what was going to happen, and it happened, and then we retrieved some money, comes costing that from tractor supply. I don't know if we did it. And, and we've not recouped anything else from the property, only because nothing, except for the ones that have been AT&amp;T, those people, right? So, so the properties that are there, that have nothing sitting on them yet, we've not recouped anything from them, is that?
There was one property, most everybody else got wind of it during the third day period. And then we also gave the other property owners, it's my time, the mine at half price, so we collect half price. Tractor supply worked out well for us, though. We worked some pre-engineering, and we got, and gave them their fair share because they could afford it, being at the end of the line, they couldn't really afford to know that to have.
I think with the lines in the ground, and this is what I was suggesting, we have a meeting or study session. I think with the lines in the ground, and I know we can't just go put lines anywhere, I mean, I'd love to go to 10. You know, we, if we, in the future, not if, when 10 becomes city limits, we would look at the same thing, you know. You can wait until somebody comes along to help pay for it, or you can go do it and expect it to happen. I don't know. That's the reason I think it's important to see what other cities are doing and how they're doing it.
Well, and it goes back to what I said, they normally do it as an impact fee or recovery fee, whatever you want to call it, that, and, you know, that could be the understanding with, with Jacob, you know. We will do this, what, you know, what we, if we can get James Fork out of there, that we will do this. But as you sell each one of these properties, you say, you know, square footage, figure out square footage, acreage, whatever it is, that goes back to the city, so you have to, you have to raise your price on the ground so that we're paying back for bringing in your infrastructure. You know, there are places that, yes, the city goes out there and much pipe, and people tie onto all this, you know. We're talking about taking the 71 over there to the new fire station. Places that, that along that way, somebody else could tie onto that. And, you know, the only, right now, the only thing we get off of that, if we go to that extent, is the tap fee. And if we add a, a impact fee, and that could be added on to anything along that line. So again, I think the study session can come up with some ideas and some input, come up with some plans on that. But again, I'm looking at an annexation on the north side of Main Street of, you know, some acreage, not real big acreage, but acreage, between the Westwood Baptist Church and the dental office. Well, water and sewer across the street. Now, the people that are buying this, that are, have, they said that they would bore under the street to connect, but they have to come into the city, and we have to get James Fork to release them, so. Now, those are issues that we, we're going to go along on the north side of, of Tinsburg. We're going to be looking at that all the way up there eventually.
Is that open? That's okay. It's a can of worms, it needs to be opened.
Well, some we need to really do there, because we're not going to grow with that, I mean, we don't, we're running out of earth and we're running out of infrastructure, and we've got to do something about it.
And I'd say too, and I've probably said before, not everybody is, and I'm not saying, well, I shouldn't say it, never mind. Not everybody's tractor supplies and build anywhere they, anywhere they can, so buy a hole in it around and then have made a piece of land there. But I guess my point of that was to say that some people will go on that road, and that's okay. But I think it's important to find out how other voters are going to do, and not going to hold. I'm not going to hold my name for others. Sorry, I mean, everyone's willing.
Yes, done.
Right before we... Okay, I will, I will, we'll talk about this later. We'll start the meeting together and obviously after the first year of the process and stuff. We are now at the citizen forum portion of our agenda. I want gentlemen to sign up tonight to Mr. Niles. Your microphone is for you and you'll state your name and address and you, you're sorry, I have five minutes. Thank you.
Josh Miles, three thirteen, where I wrote Greenwood Arkansas. Wanted to come back this month to, to address you as a whole. And the last month, we were talking about a little of Greenwood and what side I live with it. So I'd like to talk briefly about my skill set, who I am, where I come from, all that kind of good stuff. If you don't know, July two thousand four, I split the burger down there at Sonic probably making the burger. December two thousand five, I went, I was also repoing cars on the side for car lots.
Best repo man I ever dealt with.
People were out worse like that than you guys.
And the midst of two thousand four, where John worked at at the time, Farmers Bank gave me a loan for a fifteen hundred dollars. In two thousand four, I didn't, I didn't have a driver's license. I was just sort of doing it. And that's just pretty much I had to grow up. But they gave me a loan, fifteen hundred dollars, was allowing me to face its suspensions and, and get my driver's license. At that point in time, I went to work for a corporation and showed me the corporate side of the repo business. From that fifteen hundred dollars, I have built a multi-million dollar company, more than one. My skill set as far as negotiating contracts is, is very good. By far, for everybody that has requested this position, I believe I'm the most qualified from that aspect. I can build something from nothing. I have that ability. I'm a very statist type person. I've roughly been to probably fifteen meetings over the past twenty months. Just over the past fifteen months, five of those, I guess we just rolled windows there for business purposes. But the whole time for business purposes, my studies mine was listening to how the, how this government operated. And I've learned a lot from each of y'all individually. I've learned your personalities, y'all learned a few of mine. Y'all learned I can get a little frustrated when it ain't going my way. Sometimes it's good, sometimes it's bad. I had the pleasure of listening to a, to an interior football game. I believe our personalities are a close one. And I can do anything. It doesn't matter. The conversation that you just had about annexation and water rights, that's where my mind runs a hundred and fifty miles an hour. And that's where, that's where I operate at the highest level. I do well under pressure. I've always been well under pressure. I can, I can, I can go like that. Sometimes it's good, sometimes that's bad. Sometimes that's bad because you don't want to make a rash decision. That's where I believe the council comes in as a whole, where everybody makes a vote, everybody makes a decision. You all have a conversation about it. I employ roughly, give or take, I don't know what month it is, what time of year it is, around forty-five people. I'm a sole owner, I don't have partnerships. I oversee this myself. Now, I have management that does a great job, that's there with me, but I oversee forty-five employees. I operate about a half a million dollars in payroll. The only thing that we outsource is, is payroll. But I oversee as far as like the hourly wage, you know, the vitamin Medicare, make sure all this is done properly. Put the company that does it for us. Trying to think what else I would like to tell you. I have been in roughly about thirty-six states with thirty-six different corporations that are like multi-million dollar, like Fortune five hundred companies, and I negotiated contracts with these people. And so I'm, I'm real good at stuff like that. Like I said last week, and Dr. Nelson, you are here, randomly at the time, for about last, last month. I probably should have been like a doctor or an attorney or an architect or something like that. Because, I mean, I'm that, that smart. And I'm not trying to took mung dag or porn, I just, I'm, I'm that smart. One of the reasons that we vote is for democracy purposes. A democracy is a system, a rule of laws, individuals and a democracy, the rule of laws protects the rights of citizens, maintains order, and limits the power of government. A democracy also is a system of government. By the population, the population voted for AC Brown. And we had about five hundred votes that separated us. In all of Sebastian County, we had one of the closest races ever, that was ran this year. And that was cool. I mean, I thought that was awesome, that, that we came together collectively as a town and we voted who we wanted to vote for. So out of everybody that's asking for this position, I've been with you the most over the past twenty months. I've been with you, I've listened to you, I've gave you some of my opinion on some, on some issues.
Mr. Niles, that's your five lines. Unless counsel?
That's sixty seconds. I understand this choice is yours, but from a democracy standpoint, I'm the person that, that should get Dr. Johnson's spot. Not only just to put in his seat and because of my skill set, but a thousand and ninety-three of your, of your voters voted for me. They want me there. They didn't want anybody else in this room, and I'm not trying to be disrespectful to anybody, but they didn't vote for anybody else. Nobody went toe to toe with an eight-year veteran, that someone that had experience with our community. Nobody stepped up to the plate. But Josh Miles, I did, and I would do it again. I love this town.
Thanks, sir. Okay, actually, next on the agenda is agenda additions, but I need to pause for a moment. I've been kind of mentally putting it off for a minute, and I was going to do it earlier. And I thought, well, we'll wait later in the, I was going to say service, it's a service. And, and my city clerk treasurer reminded me that a lot of times after a four-hour meeting, I don't think we'll go four hours. If we did, it'll be us here and Dustin, no, Dustin usually leaves too. So I want to, I want to do this, and I don't have anything to give this man. You know, there's no certification, there's no certificates, there's no proclamation, there's no, anything like that will make this... Dr. Lee Johnson is leading us, as you know. And that's horrible news, really, for the city council of Greenwood Arkansas. Dr. Lee has served this council tremendously well. He was, I can, I can tell you that when I was park director, he was the one I was scared of when I came up to ask for something. He never scared me, he never frightened me, but he certainly gives good reasons for the decision he makes, as they all do. But the rest of you aren't leaving yet, right? So anyway, I wanted to say publicly, very sincerely, that we thank you, sir, for what you've done to this city council. I know I've got the privilege and honor to be sitting over here for the last four years and the year that's going on out there as a department head. So thank you so very much for that. And the council's, it's up to the council to, to make the decision on your replacement. And, but the good news is, I, I mentioned the horrible news, that's the horrible news. The good news is that Dr. Lee will be representing this city and at the state level, a state representative. And that's just pretty awesome. I think this will not just mirror, I think it will go better than the mirror of when Ed Wilkinson was at the Capitol. I think, I, I don't think, I know that, that Dr. Johnson will do wonderful things and wondrous things and always keep Greenwood in mind. One thing, you've got to come back home. We know where he lives. So I know his wife continues to serve down there and she's now on the Boys and Girls Club board. So, but anyway, so thank you, sir, for what you've done and what you continue to do. I know you're not done tonight, we're, we're keeping you through, I believe we're keeping you through the end of the month. So we're going to give the, the big highway signs that the parks, that the street department owns, we're going to flash in Dr. Lee's personal cylinder.
You said I was leaving, y'all, I'm not going anywhere.
Well, I know, that's true, that's true. That's, that's true, that's true. It's, it's you.
I'll say a few comments for council forum, but everyone here knows that I'm excited to be doing this next phase. But certainly going to miss what I'm doing here and I appreciate your kind words. Get on with me.
All right, enough of that.
Move through, that's right, move through, move through.
All right, thank you, sir. I was so proud of the department heads this morning when I got to the point of asking for agenda additions and there were none, but that's not the case. I need to add one. We need to add, if you'll be so kind, number nine, and that is called the State Cave Street Project Resolution. Yep, I don't think so. Never mind, I was just teasing.
I do want to know.
I thought we had, I thought we were adding that, I'm sorry, pardon, never mind. Leave it at number eight. You have a correction?
Yeah, it's a second reading actually for number two, sorry, it's my first reading on here.
Okay. This is number two on the whole business? Second reading. I just want to make sure that we're going to, we're going to do this other one twice. Okay. All right, so with that, kudos to department heads, no agenda additions. I think Tom was thinking about it. Number one is the, on all business, is the Boys and Girls Club contract discussion. Again, as I was telling Mr. Sunday, Mike or Mr. Ambie, I'm sorry, was going to look at that. I'm assuming he's looked at it, but we have nothing back from him as far as making any kind of recommendation on it. I know the council, or I believe the council, I don't know that we voted or you voted on it, but I think there was some consideration at that point to the one-year contract, for sure, I believe. Other issues are, I think, I'm just saying what Tom and I have been discussing for quite a while now, is just the reporting back from the Boys and Girls Club. I think we need to get more detailed on that. The contract is a combination. Tom reminded me, is it...
Lease and a contract.
Pardon?
A lease?
A lease and a contract. We've kind of got two things together that don't need to be together. So, or they could be all the same.
Eliminated the lease itself.
And so that's one of the issues I think we need to look at. This is not anti, there's Kenny, I didn't know if you were still here.
Yeah, wait. We brought our accountant by and Mr. Tom went with her and showed her exactly how she, how he wanted it separated from our after-school program. And anything that didn't pertain to that, as of December first, everything is in place, how, how he wants it, so.
So, and I mean, I was asking questions and talking, I didn't know if you were still here or something.
We'll have more details in our budget study session.
Yeah, absolutely.
And if you wouldn't mind, if there's something that you could provide me that kind of gives me that delineation of services and revenues, the way we had discussed through, for November, that would be nice. That would give me an idea as to, for our budget study session, if there was something good.
And, and in no way is this a hint that we're trying to change things as far as removing or pleading or anything. I mean, my, my heart is still, it's still out there, as you know, a little bit of blood, sweat and tears. But so we want this to work, we want it to be good for everybody. The biggest thing, and Mr. Sunday has heard this and he knows this, and I know the council knows it because you are asked questions, we as a city need to make sure that we're doing the right thing, the correct thing, exactly what the contract handle, yeah, the contract says that we're doing specifically to the, to the specifics for the Boys and Girls Club and what's going on out there. Any questions or thoughts on that? We'll definitely get more and have all that together for you next time. Okay, next item, number two, Mr. Ambie, again, I'm here, and our list is to repeal or replace ordinance number seven oh seven, erosion control, a second reading. Do you all have that? I think, pretty sure.
So in the prior meeting, he studied research, other cities across the board have fallen, taken into consideration council comments addressed in previous meetings. He made an effort to consolidate that into his report.
Change from last meeting. Is there anyone?
No, there's nothing supposedly different about this. This is the draft that he gave me, but no changes made here. It's, well, except for I had it written in like a different format or whatever. Kind of cleaning it up as far as underlining and indentations and all. Was it different, is that what?
No.
I mean, just checking to see if it works.
Yeah, no, it's, it's...
And this is revealing the one that we had originally, talking about couldn't pick the dirt out of Greenwood.
He said it was very similar to Fort Smith, is that correct?
Other than we added on it, which is on last page, section ten.
I might motion to be about these ordinance by, for a second reading, I have not on them.
Second?
I'd motion a second.
But it's on first reading.
Second, second. You should have gone on that first reading.
Yeah, I know. Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Dang?
Yes.
Tentary?
Yes.
Landry? Seminole. Ordinance for feeling ordinance number zero seven dash CR seven and ordinance number two dash point four, regulating grading, filling, cutting, or similar activities which alone or in combination may cause landslides, flooding, degradation of water quality, erosion, sedimentation, potential damage to utility lines. If there are emergency...
I wish you had something there about quality of looks of the town.
So you can...
Wish there was something that I heard about quality of the looks of the town.
Unsightly.
Unsightly.
A little wriggling on us, so also like wriggling, or town looks like a lot of landfill. Kind of foreign. Maybe we can go over it on the third reading and do the thoughts together.
I thought that one of those did have, I mean, that's kind of where it started with that and do it to...
The only thing about the term unsightly, and we touched on that a little bit with Mr. Hake at one time in Door Rock. He said, maybe off on another thing here, but it was, you have to be, you have to be careful with it, but what does that mean? Who is, and I agree with what you're saying, I am totally right behind you, but you have to come up with the right language to decide what that means. I mean, unsightly to me, me, could be obviously different. So he was, and he didn't really have an answer for it, it's kind of like, you can't have that. And there's a couple of terms in more than are even, there's another one too, like they don't even recognize it anymore.
I remember this pretty lawsuit when I was a college, Tom, whatever, Noddy, across from St. Toby's, there was this guy that had stuff out in his yard, he might have, went out there and it was junk. Well, and I went and started pushing it, he said, eh, junk, it's art.
Antique art?
Yeah. So we went. It just depends on your perspective of what it's...
Well, I like, we may, we may could do something like at the end of a lot of these ordinances where the mayor is appointed and that's all we, so let this hold until Tammy shows up.
Tammy, you got a lot.
You got a little. But I agree with what you're, what you're saying.
You could say that it's unsightly as determined by the planning permission and/or the council. Sounds good to me. Which gives a group of people down there, you decide as a whole whether it's unsightly, I guess.
And we can, that's a pretty simple question to ask in this board, and that's a phone call too, that we can get some help. Okay. Good? All right, number three, ordinance for possession. All right. Uh, number three, ordinance for possession and handling explosive materials.
Now, this is the first time that we've seen this.
I believe so.
They gave it to you in the last meeting.
Did they give it to you?
Yes. And he told us to ask you to look at it and put it on next agenda.
Uh, this, although one thing I found, there was a mention of the mayor or his or her zilla or a planning permission. Member or somebody in the planning department was gonna make the decision. I'm assuming that's the inspector or who?
Where does that seem like?
Over the definition of multiple authority.
Yeah. So, wherever it mentions multiple authority.
I did too. It's almost like I, like I said, something we were talking about, we need to have a copula at all times. I was saying to go up there and talk about it can't blast, then it can blast it.
Those of you in the back row that are in the blast radius, have y'all perused through this ordinance? Have y'all seen it? Would y'all like mine?
I mean, we can get you.
He had, he had mine. He had one right.
It talks about the lease in section four, so.
Yes, sir.
It's what?
It talks about that whole lease.
Dr. Rob?
Section four.
Yeah, Dr. Rob.
Okay, it's Dr. Rob.
Grab out.
He said around road. You're welcome. Hey, Doc. How about that? Where was, where did you want that at?
Section four talks about if there's an ordinance to assist that the planning department or the police should be there.
Oh, yeah. And that's what you were wanting?
Yeah.
We sure don't wanna be a sidearm.
Are you wanting to know the person that's gonna give that or the person that's gonna force it?
Well, I think they're gonna force it.
Are you suggesting firework?
Person was young, had to force it. Fireworks are probably the first one blasting. I haven't seen the ordinance, like your termination. That'd be something.
It's available online. They send the packets online and it's in there.
I may wanna, I may take a look at that and get a hold of, take a fire mark and see if they have anything to do with that. Since they approved fireworks and everything else, I'm not sure when the blasting part goes through. I know when, say, a, uh, gas company or anybody that's been drilling, they're gonna do some blasting. Most time they contact fire, with fire departments.
Blasting regulations are standard fire prevention code 1999 edition. Go where it helps.
I'd say that could be through the fire. I might wind it.
Act 814.
You can come on a pointy.
That would be the, what we have in your picture.
So, this is just the rules that somebody wants to come in and blast, correct? Lines, fees, distance from, all the stuff we talked about. Gotta have all your state stuff in order.
All in permanent.
You know, in, uh, section five, number three, I'd like to ask the city attorney, we could raise that million dollars. That's probably over. I carry three million dollars just in my business. And I don't blow things up and down tonight.
Where was that, Rod?
Number three.
Section five, number three.
I don't have a thought of a million dollar venture.
A million, huh?
That's really designated a safe, shouldn't it? So, so section seven.
Yeah, you're right. It's, it's obviously covered.
Could I ask a question?
Yes, sir. Dan, if you don't mind, if you, just for a thing.
It's a million per occurrence and the, and we can.
Million doesn't go very far.
Yeah.
Dan, we're on 141 where we drive.
Wait a minute. What's your nickname?
Not in my Dan. I wonder who gives that to me, 'cause that's great.
I think he's guilty over there.
It's not a lot different from what you had, I just say, to me. Um, this is, uh, under five, uh, letter B. Notification of initial blasting must be given thirty days in advance. Didn't say written or published or whatever. So, I'd like to know what kind of notification you're talking about there. Again, notification, is that within the 500 feet blasting area or?
It says, uh, security.
All business and businesses. We get that. Maybe we stand on the property and yell, and that's notification. Be technical, I guess.
Rent, rent.
It says a hundred dollars. I mean, it used to be fifty dollars. It's still, that's not much. So, you guys decide, uh.
What is that? All the fee?
All the fee.
So, you request identification, meaning the time is more clear with you?
Well, yeah. Like, if you're gonna do written, written to those people with, or those businesses, whatever, or publish, put in paper, like you do on a certified letter or whatever. Change of ordinance. You haven't come up with the hundred dollar presentation. That's double what it was. I mean, that's. When? Seems like it.
The state doesn't have a fee they issue there.
I think it was.
I, I think it's Barrick.
Yeah.
From.
On what I remember seeing.
Durst Station. Durst Station. But, again, the ordinance that you had originally was written in 2000 and then had a fifty dollar fee. And then a violation of it was another fifty dollars.
I think I heard, remember a conversation with somebody, said, well, I need to be at least double. That didn't do much.
Yeah, that, I mean, the million dollar liability, that's great. What's an occurrence? It's, I mean, if that's every time they do a blast, then that's cool. I mean, that, but if that's for everybody within the blast radius, then, um, with Rod, a million dollars isn't a poor fair anymore. I mean, it's gonna cost you guys more than a million dollars to put a sidewalk from the Mexican restaurant to Liberty Drive. And these are C or what was three? And I said our fines will not exceed five hundred dollars. And I just really seen the kind of name. Not much of a distance.
Hey, Rod, check out section 7E. Strategic showing general liability and property damage insurance with limited viability, not less than one thousand dollars.
That's wrong. So, maybe before you're.
Did you read it?
I, I just really like, it ought to be after three, four, five million dollars. That's not, that's not on, on risk. There again, I carry three million. That's not that big of a. I carry three million dollars, it's here, you spend, park down, kick the meatpacking plant, so everybody went up three million dollars, it's working the processing plant. So.
I didn't.
I was very curious. Thank you. I was very curious. I'm trying to figure out the three million dollars of damage on the rock before. But I'm talking about that later.
Well, they probably didn't think, uh, on purpose, huh? B and M metal could burn down the entire plant, but they did. You know, by just doing a little welding.
And I think if you're blasting, you'd wear near anything. You could have got a million dollars worth of damage and hurt. You didn't have.
Probably the low numbers we see here and there are probably because we're hoping to avoid any blasting with all the wardage and limits and winds and wears. Basically just outlawing and crawling pretty much into the city and blasting is why, is why the fees and stuff are, are so low and.
It's, it's pretty close to what you've already got on the ordinance. I mean, there's not a lot of change in the perp issue. The federal regulations require a written notice and free blast survey that anybody who's been a quarter mile of blasting carrier where they're gonna use more than the equivalent of five hundred. Nothing like that, man. The blasters have those regulations to follow. Of what we did asking for is that you just need those already in place for the blasters and the.
I thought that's what we were gonna get.
That's not what you got here.
That's what I thought the conversation was headed toward.
Make motion to table until city attorney be present.
Thank you.
Motion.
Like that's naked.
Motion.
With that, with that motion, we need to make sure that the developer doesn't have any action moving forward. I'm guessing none of their plan through or anything happens until this thing goes through, Rod. I mean, they're all frozen. I'm looking over y'all some.
That, that property's been built for sale. And the plans are currently on hold. But.
It's only been ordered to fly.
You couldn't be proud of them.
They've held in property out of county now.
Sorry, talking like.
They've all property out of county. I think their house is sold.
Bert's looking at it?
We have a motion to second.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
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 Do y'all need to put it on the next agenda?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you, gentlemen. Number five, new business planning buildings. Bell? I did?
Thank you.
Oh, my gosh. What's wrong? Jill, you're gonna have to get in trouble. Number four, I'm sorry, have a seat there.
House for Kevin.
Sorry, Department of West Coast Commission, highway city on corridor recoup E40s. Can we get this? Second reading. Um, our mark.
You know, we came up with something, trying to follow council, which is a directive towards recoup. What we do, when we do place infrastructure in, so I wanna make you aware that it may not cover the entire cost. It's, you know, there's, there's no way of knowing. Everything's different. Some cases, some cases, some cases, but. Also attached to the building permits, because in some places we won't own the water rides. So, it would still currently provide fire protection if someone develops attached to the building permit. And so, it's all the way around the, the water bed. So, we'd like to ask for, um, that's our second reading.
And so, this is basically the genesis of the other one that we got. Your fitness and your ATP store, all that recoup stuff that we did, that kind of got the ball rolling for what you're doing here.
Yes, we're trying to get ahead of, ahead of this situation we're looking at. Next year, we have some plans on the table to go from Liberty Drive south to Denver Street. Um, there's no development there right now, but it is that corridor. In that case, we actually could end up with a water rise because Jamesport doesn't have the water, because there's not a water line right in that, in the mid-area.
Now, this is all in the school. I mean, I know you've probably been in conversations with school or that, I mean, if they're not ever gonna sell, I don't know why we put water in there.
Yeah, I, I asked that question too. Um, and I think it's a way of getting a line going that direction. And so that you can continue southward or also on Denver Street, should we acquire more water rides. And I think, you know, right now, we have plans on the table for fire hydrants and, uh, spaced at the commercial 250 feet, uh, spacing. That's something that we could pull back on and save a bunch of money to get the truck line in and maybe put one fire hydrant in since there's nothing to protect. And then if it were developed, those could be, the developer to add those fire hydrants, because they walk, it can cost them, you know, five, seven, eight thousand dollars.
And the secretary benefits, once we get our, our metal and groundler.
That's a little benefit.
Yeah.
So, that's, that's primarily set the stakes for that area and would also be.
This is not, this, is this talking about this is going south to Denver or this? Going to that.
This, this, this will cover everything that we're looking at currently. But right now, the catalyst is, you know, the Liberty Drive, Liberty Denver. Should we get ahead of that, should we go forward? Right now, we just authorize the engineer. Should we go forward and.
So, this will be on the books in case we ever annex, in case we ever hit water rights, in case they ever.
Yes. I would caution you, there is room for negotiation. I, you know, we talked about, y'all, y'all talked about that ones yourselves, you know, there, there is a clause in that negotiation, so. And you know.
Section three, where you can adjust the amount of that.
And you know, our, our sales tax was up. And see, that's, that's where the balancing act comes in. Um, twenty for water, twenty for wastewater for, uh, maybe, uh, an insurance agency that's got a, let's see. But they still gotta have fire protection, you know, that, that could be pretty dear, uh.
Or ability.
For, uh, yeah. But for something else, uh, you know, that could be easily affordable, wanting tractor supply, uh, paid, uh, thirty-five, thirty-seven, somewhere around there, plus engineering. You know, they didn't like the eye of that, so it could be very affordable for something like that. I think tractor supply, this is probably the first year that we had a full year. We seen our sales tax up. You know, we had the spring and so lawnmowers. We, that's probably, you know, you can rationalize that, uh, spending money on the. Think you're gonna get a, a current on a business like that on your sales tax. We're never gonna sell enough water on these lines.
Correct.
Hey, Cam, are we gonna get an actual exhibit A that goes with this?
Section one.
The. The one we had last month was actually the annexation, the annexation act.
It's been both pardon, sure extension is what it is.
It's the same. It, it mirrored that.
Yeah.
But I mean, here it says attached here two, because the A is applied proposed.
So, that you get one next meeting.
Okay. So, it takes.
It's like they want everything that's on here.
I, I understand.
It's basically just, actually, next month, before we pass it, we should probably, we're looking at.
We discussed all the different amounts and that's, that's a amount.
We need to spread the word that this thing may get passed that much or some businesses will come and sneak up the radar and get into that.
Our planning, our planning commission, our planning commission up here. I think the motion would put this on the secretary.
Looks like a tax law.
A motion to second.
Cause that takes the word.
Second reading.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Daniel?
Yes.
Yes.
Tim Terry?
Yes.
Yes. An ordinance recouping club expanded on the extension of water and sewer lines along the market corridor, along the highway seven north south, as depicted on the attached class, and further.
I'll see that you get that. And I'd also like to thank Dr. Johnson for his support over the years. And that's a good job.
Do you need frequency?
You don't have any, sir. Mr. Bell, where you in?
Uh, council, mayor, history, first island, uh, under the business is a sign marriage request for Farm and Bank. This is a borough, uh, three, two, nine. And this ordinance we put together, uh, it calls for any variance of a sign to come directly to the city council without going through the planning commission. So, we're here, I'm here tonight to ask for the approval of a variance. And that tag that there, you see, is a letter that I sent to the, uh, people that live within that three hundred, uh, area, that's the big dot.
What does this picture have to do with it?
That is the area that that three hundred foot covers. And so, anybody.
Oh, are they either.
Excuse me, that, that's one that we're gonna be talking about later. I don't know about it's in there. I'm sorry. Pardon me. It's over there. Yeah. That's one's all good. Sorry.
Can you go talk to her or are you just marking?
But the next, uh, the next he chose to do is the name of the people that letters were sent to, and there was no, no one opposed to it. The map here that you see is upside down apparently. This is, this is Center Street. As it makes a corner heading west, uh, Davis Gym would be on this, this lower area. The dark line there is where they would like to put their sign. There, it's not in the sight line of any other, uh, large sign, either coming or going. Uh, you can see there is a, uh, picture of the proposed sign and the location. It's right there by our pump station, just to the east of our pump station. That's looking east. And then the other one is, is looking west. As you see, there's not any other billboard within the sight line. And then the other one is looking west, because you see there's not any other billboard within the sight line. The, uh, the reason that they're asking for a variance is in, in the ordinance, it says, uh, that you can't have a sign of any kind within a thousand feet of a billboard. So the billboard is on the Davis property, and, uh, this is approximately three hundred foot from that billboard. Now, uh, if you think about going down ten fur in the billboards that are there, and saying there are no signs of any kind within a thousand foot of it, that would eliminate a lot of advertising for our businesses. So that's the reason we need the variance, is because it's three hundred foot, uh, within that thousand foot.
So, so the variance, it's only for the footage, it's not.
No, everything else, the form should decide, the ordinance is just the, uh, just the footage. And like I said, I, I attached the part of the, uh, variance for there, for the sign that says it may apply to the city council. Again, it, it does it go through the planning commission, it comes right to you guys.
I got a question for, Mr. Brown, is this your handwork?
The Photoshop?
I don't need to hire you, it's my Photoshop. That looks like it's already there.
Oh, y'all see the color?
Oh, yeah?
I got another one.
Well, before I hire you, can we look at this? Oh, yeah, it's already in the ground.
You need to hire your man Photoshop.
But if you know that I read Rob's comments while he was discussing anything earlier.
Good job.
Yeah, I did a really good job.
Is that what that variance sign is set number?
Yes. Yes.
I would think the motion we grant the variance.
Have a motion to second.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
Cause we have an ordinance that says you can't have farm and structures and water bodies, and we've got thirty foot east, is that sign will be okay within fifty foot east?
It sounds a show, and if it's in the east, we'll definitely check it though.
And is this variance going to get that ordinance?
We just create variance for the distance. I would say we just create variance for the distance portion of.
The pictures.
If you come back and it turns out in the east, would that be a separate variance?
Yes.
So we've got a good thing, please, and a little state right away.
Yeah, it means those, it'll meet those requirements.
Here's the.
Well, over an action, does this show, please?
All right, we started from the highways.
Fifteen.
Fifteen foot from the. Fifty foot. Fifty foot from the highway, got from the.
Fifty seventy feet from the center of the street.
Should've reached, there's a water easement also, should've picked the water easement place.
Does it even from the highway over the highway?
Yeah, to the back of the state.
Over.
The state, it would be fifteen feet.
You want there right away?
Yeah, it would, it would, yeah, it would exceed as this assumption.
Well, like, like Dr. Johnson said, if it, if it does, if we do find out that that east, it will have come back for those variants that, uh, according to the map. And our motion, uh, is outside of their water.
So, so the motion we have is just to grant variance for the distance.
Yeah.
It's a big, it's a serious, the distance of the sign.
In the, in the letter that we submitted to Sonny on that section E, it said that the billboard be constructed approximately seventy feet from the center of West Highway, Denver. This would far exceed the setback line of the city ordinance of fifteen feet from the street and highway right away. Salsic sees the fifty feet required by the state of Arkansas Highway Department of Transportation. Renification coordinator indicated that this location does not require a state permanent for billboard to be written on the sight line. But in terms of the first section, I think it meets the easement, what you were talking about.
What he said. We're, uh, from, from a state right away, we're fifteen feet from the right away, from the end.
Past that.
Or, I mean, and you said seventy feet, it would be the sign again.
Right.
We'll take the center of the race, same seventy feet, same, that's on the way to the same right away.
Oh, I figured in from there. Well, again, you're, you're figuring the distance in there.
Yeah, we can come back later.
So what is your formal?
We grant the variance for the placement of the sign that is, you know, presented to us.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Dr. Johnson?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
McDaniel?
Yes.
Tinterry?
Yes.
Lester? That's yours.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Mayor, the second item is, uh, uh, for rezon of property on, uh, uh, that picture here with this one? Yes, yes, that's, that's the picture we're looking for. All right, the rezoning property on Dogwood, this is another one of the lots that was somebody's another many years ago. Uh, they had zoned that commercial, wailing up into the old Hackett area, and we want to rezone this to R5. The, the properties involved is like ten, eleven, and twelve, they're on Dogwood, and why it was zoned commercial, I have no idea.
R5 is that the one we just added, right?
Yes, yes, that's the big few. We have a lot of success over in that area with, uh, very nice duplexes, people that, uh, were a little skittish about it when they started, have all gone on board, and they've, uh, very complimentary of what, uh, the gentleman, uh, building over there.
Well, it's in McKitty's, he's always.
Oh, he's always.
Okay.
Robert McKitty drafted the R5 ordinance.
They are.
We have no anymore, four ways gone, I'm good.
That's new, yes.
This is emergency, Sonny Bell?
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
I was hoping my last meeting could get you an emergency.
Okay, well, you got it, that's reasonable, but there, we.
You're ready.
You're ready.
Developers argue for almost a bunch of buildings, so now, if a developer just ran a bill, we hadn't promised him anything, I mean, it's just, well, then what if it's not an emergency?
Well, it would be nice to allow builders to build without putting too many restrictions upon them.
We need to talk to State Representative, they didn't get the three readings, we all checked.
I made a motion right now, we put it on the first reading, that's all I'm.
Second. Motion to second.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Dr. Johnson?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
McDaniel?
Yes.
Tinterry?
Yes.
Lester? Manus? An ordinance, submitting ordinance number seventeen dash zero seven, to purpose of rezoning certain property in the city of Greenwood, amending that the zoning mandate in the city of Greenwood declaring the ordinance to be a pro.
I made a motion, we suspend the second property.
Second.
Then the rule.
Yes.
Motion to second.
Brown?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
McDaniel?
Yes.
Tinterry?
Yes.
Tinterry?
Make a motion, we got the ordinance.
Second.
Motion second to that.
Brown?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
McDaniel?
Yes.
Tinterry?
Yes.
Make a motion, we act emergency call.
Second.
Motion second to act emergency call.
Lither? Chris Powell?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
McDaniel?
Yes.
Tinterry?
Yes.
Dr. Johnson?
Yes.
Dunham?
After ten years, I think I finally.
Look at that luxury look like that. That was a deer in the headlights.
If you wanna have that luxury look.
Dr. Johnson, I'd like to wear a skin shirt, say, or go fishing.
Thank you, son.
That was our part of the gift.
That's like a gold one.
It's better, better.
Thank you, Mr. Bell. Uh, number seven, the street apartment, resolution to U.S. state in street money, to work with, and, uh, try to get this on the bar, maybe you want to do that.
Just the thing that we talked about, our budget there.
Yes, sir. This is, yes, sir. Well, this is to, we, we have to have a resolution back on our treaty to make this happen.
This is for the two hundred fifty thousand.
That's correct.
While we didn't stake two hundred fifty thousand.
And that's their resolution.
Okay. I'll make it one two next week.
But so, you know, I, I'll make sure that you know, the two, your passing a resolution to accept what they are, or grant us the two hundred fifty thousand dollar money. And as you know, when the budget stays, since we talked about an eighty thousand dollar over run-up, which you will, will yet to be passed in the budget, well.
I'd like a motion to have the doctor's resolution utilizing state street monies.
Second.
Our motion to second.
To overlay Denver Street?
Yes, sir.
Who's doing the work?
They, the state put this up in the bill, just this is exactly the circumstances that we have. I don't know, makes to it.
You have my suggestion to, don't want?
We did, I already did. I put that bug in there.
Just check.
Now, we don't have that control.
No, I don't.
But it's, but I certainly did.
Because that was trained, right?
Yeah.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
McDaniel?
Yes.
Tinterry?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you very much. Hopefully, if we had a report back from our ideas to win this, uh, will happen, but I think, well, they did talk to you about maybe put this out for bid in January. So there's a meeting to be. Our meeting to be. Yeah, we'll have a meeting, and then, so the process should be exactly as the next street.
We have to go to the sidewalk, Tim, when that went down, or they, they could have.
They don't do it.
There's not a wire, I don't have a wire for sidewalk work up there.
We, we thought, because it was them, they would, but there was nothing, that never came about. I mean, we'd love to curb a gutter sidewalk, absolutely.
I'm glad the city are getting on board with sidewalks.
Is it, oh, I'm not. Now, Denver needs some of that, I mean, you just got, it's not as bad as says, didn't spur.
You're right.
It is.
It might worse.
It's worse than Mitchell's favor.
I'm just wondering, this overlay, they're, they're just gonna overlay what's existing, we're not gonna go in wider, there's, I mean.
That's all this is for.
We might do the same thing on Main Street.
Do what?
We might do the same thing on Main Street.
I mean, it needs them, that's fine.
And we all, we will, I mean, I, my intention is to come back absolutely and start looking at Denver, for instance, and more grants. I mean, the sooner, the sooner we get this money and use it, I think the sooner we'll get some, so Denver's our next, I think, the next good target for sidewalks.
And what was our cut on this?
We, this is for two hundred fifty thousand dollars from state.
Yep.
We already know that their estimate back to us is an eighty, we're gonna need another eighty thousand dollars, which is in the street budget yet to be passed.
They're rich.
Not, not eighty thousand dollars for us to repay all of Denver.
Rich.
That's official. Okay, thank you, sir, gentlemen. Finest part of the resolution, that's temporary budget.
Is there a precedent for, for resolution?
Yep.
Well, the goal is that by the end of all these budget reviews that we're doing this month, we did it by the way last, we did it in January of this year. We're going to be able to present a finalized budget to you at the first council in the end of January. What we still need, because we're not gonna have it ready at the end of the month, and I don't think you wanna do a special session on that, this will cover that.
I want you to leave me alone in January night.
That, you got my promise.
I make a motion, we pass your resolution, that's temporary budget.
Our motion to second.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
McDaniel?
Yes.
Tinterry?
Yes.
Lester? Yes.
Thank you. Uh, time for department reports and questions for council, we have several, um, here and now, so all of you pick and choose who you'd like to hear from, unless you.
Little dogs.
Just 'cause it's on front row. I mean, they're all, I mean, anybody, I can get them up, or if you guys just wanna, you got some written reports, I know, for sure, it's great. Police, I guess you got one.
I'd like to beat up the water bill some more, but I'm almost tired of the crap, but. I just, yeah, I'm missing some big picture.
Document it.
Just the whole water rides, who's laying the pipe, who's gonna annex, who's in, I understand that there's water rides, of course, we had through this on the older street deal, if I'm not mistaken, and somebody in the rocks, and they're looking, taking water rides, and then there was, and there wasn't, and it is. We argue back and forth.
We've been told all sorts of things, as in, first, first one with pipes in the ground, and, and then we were told, well, that one, you can go through the way.
Well, they went over the pipes, and let us go up around and through, so.
It's hard, it's hard, even Mr. Vanzanlin, I think, I mean, he's pretty of one, but he.
So, is there no way to get a hold of prospective businesses, is there an inside track, is that legal? And get their thoughts, something, do we have any ideas? I mean, is that, would, would we be creepy to that, or is there anybody even out there that's wanting to build? Why I say all that is, let's just say that for a second, I mean, you hear about the KJ Friday, and the Hall Anypress, and all these, and fire out subs, or whatever. I'm just wondering, it'd be nice to talk to somebody that's might actually be able to build there, and say, what are you waiting on, what are you needing? And then we can figure out if they wanna spend a bunch of money trying to get pipes in the ground, and water rides, and annexation, I mean, obviously, if you get some kind of hotel deal, that'd be great, but you got AP money that can just start finally doing something good, or get a big inflow for that part of the, of tax hotel deal.
Is there a serious buyer?
That's what I'm asking, if we know, why can't we go, I mean, or can we, I don't know what's.
It's not the city, or.
Yeah, that's true. I mean, I'm sure wherever everybody's annexation, and if they're willing to pay some of the, put that stuff in the ground, once the land gets to annex, and maybe let it out a little more at some point. Say, look, in fact, when that gets down to where you're ready to build, are you gonna be willing to work with the city on getting water, and then we'll, cause we gotta do this with these jokers, and then.
I think what you're describing is everybody waiting on everybody else to do. And, and that's exactly kind of what the scenario is, I mean, Mr. Burton, I, I will tell you this, and this is, this is not a secret, he is now represented by an individual who, a, a good friend of mine, who will not let this die, I mean, he will be pestered tremendously, until, and, and to my knowledge, there is one very serious buyer looking at one particular piece of that property. I don't even know who that is yet, I just know that. So I think, I think it's just everybody waiting on the other, I, I, I don't feel sorry for him, but I know that Mr. Burton has people, when he talks to people, their questions are, what's there? Is the water there, and of course, he's telling them probably, or sir, and he's telling them, well, we think it's coming, well, is it really? So there's always that. So I, I think those are the things that we were discussing at the beginning, and indeed bring in, uh, I mean, I, I, I think it's not a bad idea, and I've mentioned the town or the city of, uh, Poldo before. I don't know that they can help us with this specifically, but they might can, I know they, they're kind of out there doing things, I mean, I don't, I'm not suggesting we get in the building business, but they, they own property, they build buildings, and then they rent, you know, or sell.
Where are we in the property?
We are, we are.
But the problem you got, there, it looks to me like, is there is no plan. No plan is.
No, there is.
No plan is.
No, there's.
No.
There's a sign.
There's a plan.
That's all it is, it's a sign with lines on it.
No, no, they.
Nobody's got infrastructure at the ground.
Oh, that's not planned, that's.
To go buy a piece of land without somebody saying, this is what's gonna happen in this.
Well, they can't say that without the city giving them some idea, I mean.
To, but to your point, everybody's waiting on everybody to do something, and nothing is getting done, and, I mean, I just don't see any business person coming up there and saying, okay, I'm gonna buy this piece of land. Now, it's all gonna be.
You're gonna have somebody like Tractor Supply, it's, it's gonna be a couple of larger businesses, I believe.
I mean, somebody's.
They're gonna come in, and they're, they don't care what they have to do to get there.
I mean, they're either gonna demand that you have all this lined out, or I'm gonna take charge and I'm gonna line it out, right? You know, maybe they.
That's what I'm saying.
They tractor supply company company.
There had been, and this is, and again, I'm not trying to sell it or, or anything, but the, I know Mr. Burton had offered, if you will, the fire department, for instance, and I'm not saying they, this is a good, either way, they gotta, we gotta get spot property on the other side of seven one on the mountain, no doubt about it. But he made an offer to officially, to the fire department, for, I'll give you this piece of property, you gotta let me build, you gotta let me finish it, and he's gonna make some money, I mean, but he was gonna do that, and he made that same offer to the library. I don't know if the library is, that's a good place for a library, it's a backup, he is, he not doing that on the front property, obviously. So he, you know, there's an attempt to get something out there to start the ball rolling. Either one of those things get, get a teaching site there, I don't know, uh, but it's a start, so, but I do know, I mean, it is happy, it is being worked on, and I, again, I'm not the real estate guy, and I feel like one sometimes, but, and that's okay, I think that's part of my job, but, uh, but again, I, I think it's just everybody waiting on everybody, so maybe we can.
What, what are we waiting on?
To.
We don't have to wait.
You mean to annex?
Yeah. Yes.
The annexation is in the hands of us, getting with the judge, and getting back to G I S.
Do they have a good rank, or they?
I'd say.
Well, I mean, if the annexation, if we separated that piece of land, that, instead of funding the big annexation.
Any of it, correct?
You're right.
Any of that is up, is between, that's getting with the county, right?
Yeah, it always ends there.
Yeah.
It's just.
The county.
Reversing down.
Yeah, the county is always a step, but this time they're the first step.
You know, if I, if, if we said, and if Burton approved it, all I would need is a survey and probably already have it of the property with a legal one. And I would send it to G I S, they'd look at it, and they, or we could, then we would get the judge to through releasing that property to the city, and then I would bring it to you guys, and you would approve.
Well, that's what I'm asking though, do we need to go to Burton to get that? Which is different than the, what you described earlier about the whole big annexation.
Yeah, Burton has to prove it because that's his property.
Right. Can, can we go to Burton and say, will you approve this?
And, and he has agreed, uh, when he knows that he can get water and sewer for people that become, you know, that wants to buy the property. Like, back to your other state, and we have a plat of that property, that shows here's different sized, uh, parcels.
Got the road.
If you want, if you want to build a, a hotel, here's your parcel, if you want to build a library, here's your parcel.
And the roads are in there too.
Yeah.
Right, I'm not, or.
Exchange, and everything else, so, but you know, for example.
Well, and to clarify, I mean, I don't mean to be critical about it, what he's doing, we got a plat that says, here's how it's going to plow, and there's a rock the size of this room sitting there, that somebody's going to say, well, who's going to move that property?
Who blessed it?
Is it?
We've seen, we've seen one large commercial project that's located on Center Street that probably would have been out there on the corner, if it had water and sewer there, leased a fire, you know, that's the first thing people ask me when they call.
So, what are we waiting on for water and sewer out there?
Dan, can I answer this for you?
Yeah, please.
Everything, everything goes back to our plat requires, the plat that he wanted to have requires fire protection. The fire protection is going to come from City Greenwood or Jamesport, Jamesport doesn't deal with fire protection.
Right.
So, while we're sitting here waiting to buy the water rights, I have no idea, but they are not going to provide us what we need, if they finally provide us what we need, when we want to expand, they're going to say, we gave you all we could give, now you have to buy some more water rights. So, at some point, the City of Greenwood will have to jump into it and buy the water rights so we can put in what's going to be required, because they don't do that, that's not what they're in business for, they sell drinking.
Why don't we put in pipes there?
So, I don't know.
We can provide fire suppression in those areas, we can't sell drinking water or water within the buildings, because they have rocks for that, but. Their rights provide water for inside the buildings, it's not providing firefighting water. Problem with Burton property is they probably can't, they couldn't provide the firefighting water if they wanted to, they don't have enough pressure or line size, they may not have enough pressure line size if they care what's inside the buildings, it goes to get off the area, it goes to be completely closed.
We, uh, speaking from the water, you know, the fire protection is a signal, it's not a water department order.
Right.
Make those fire flows, and yes, Jamesport, very well, I could provide, you might have to go back to which, if they'll land on a line, would they cost effectively, and they would make the developer, they don't do that, and typically, we don't do that either, you know, we, you know, we're trying to work forward through this. But, right now, we have wastewater on that property, we have a twelve inch water line within arm's reach on the other side of the road, but even with Tractor Supply, they brought us a concrete plan, they signed a contract with us, we, we didn't, we didn't go run a twelve inch line down the road, and then they said, well, we're not going to build this now, uh, sorry, we backed out, we had a, I had a contract. I mean, right now, we don't have anything, we wouldn't know what size to put in, i- if we were, and typically, that's the developer, but they had to bring us some con- concrete, and, uh, you know, of course, work forward through that, now the water rights issue, that, that is another, that is another thing, and that, it needs to be resolved, uh, we. Well, we had to provide fire protection, but they don't have revenue line, we do have an agreement, we had worked that forward to Jamesport, and they provided it writing to us, but they don't care if we can provide fire protection as long as we don't sell water on the other.
Well, I think the first key is getting the land annexed, and, uh, since it's been, kind of, the order's been reversed, Sonny, uh, do we have to be on the, uh, the, uh, Quorum Court's agenda, or is that something that the judge?
No, if, if it's filed with the county, and then the judge hears it at one of his hearings, you know, it is like a, a small court over at the courthouse, on the agenda will be the annexation of certain properties. And then I would go over there and answer any questions he might have, and, you know, with one parcel like that, uh, the G I S is going to, it, it will go through G I S and go through the judge, and I can't see the judge turning it down. You know, the big issue with this other is the expansion of the, you know, from, uh, March Chapel Road to Elwood Cup, you know, and down the south side of Tinsborough, and on the north side of, of, uh, uh, south side of Ten, north side of Tinsborough, you know, that's a, a big area of commercial property. And they look at it, and we're doing a land grab.
Okay, right there, but you're, there you said land grabbing, but the other option was to, to, uh, promote the gateway to the city, what you said earlier?
That's what, that's what we're, that, that's, it's kind of like the difference between a bypass and a traffic police.
Okay, so, we just focus on the thirty-five, whatever acres of Burton property, that would qualify as a gateway to our community?
Well, it'd be a portion of the gateway, yes.
But we've had a better chance of not, not being called a land grab, and we're trying to get something that literally comes running to our city.
Yeah. So, if, if, Jacob, I mean, Mr. Burton wants to come in, that changes the whole.
He's wanted to for two years, I've heard him say that a hundred times.
I mean, but.
But he does want to.
He hasn't committed to, he hasn't committed to, I mean, I think if.
I mean, I hear he wants to come in if.
They'll go have water.
If he were pressing that issue, he'd be in.
Yeah, we're, we're not taxing it, I will, whatever. It's the difference of an hour or a hundred years.
Well, but if he's got buyers, they're going to pay, they're going to help him pay his taxes, I mean.
But, he's not Tractor Supply.
Well, but the difference, I mean, another difference between Tractor Supply and this is that the property Tractor Supply was on was already in the city.
Correct.
And so, when Tractor Supply came in and negotiated, and were negotiating with us at the city.
When I talked to Tractor Supply, what they asked me for was a piece of property that was in the city limits, and fire, and police.
I think if that quarter property were in the city limits, you'd already have people coming and talking to us about it.
And, and so, I, I told, he looked at the place out on, on Ten and seventy-one, and I said, you know, there's no city services out there, it's in the city limits, there's no city services. And we looked at different places along Tinsborough, and we came up to that area right there on the corner, and now, he's looking at, at this area with a Google map in Arizona, and I'm looking at it here, and he says, I like that spot right there, well, he, you know, went across the street, and I said, you know, there's no, we've got sewer there, but we don't have water rights, you know, and outside the city limits, we bring it in the city limits, and, you know, if you're interested, he said, no, I like it outside. I said, it's a big hole in the ground. And he says, I said, but the good news is, there's a mountain across the street that we can move over there, and so, he sent his engineer down, we went out there, and we looked at it, and he looked at the hole, and we looked at the mountain, he said, I think I can make this work. And so, that's the reason why they're where they are, uh, you know, he has occupancy over there, but again, we need to have in the city limits, we need to have water and sewer access, we're not going to go there, Burton's property, and run pipe all over the place, we're going to put it on the edge of his property, and then he is, he is responsible from there, it's like our sewer is over there, you'll go by there, you'll just hear a manhole, that's where we stop.
Well, would, uh, you know, to our experience.
Well, the big difference between where Tractor Supply is, is that was our water rights there, so, we could, we could annex this, uh, we could annex where Burton's at, but if we annex that, and then they, they turn this down on water rights.
If Tractor Supply, Tractor Supply needed fork over seventy thousand dollars for water rights, they would just.
They would, um, they got hacked out right, right where we, we're at.
Again, if you have other commercial property that moved towards town that had water and sewer, because that's what they said, you have water and sewer, so then the city limits, please require it, yeah, you know, Casey, there you go. And, well, then, you know, you've got two properties here, can we combine those into one, and, and, you know, build here, we've got a new one coming in, it's going to, it's, you would think that they would want to be out there where Burton is, right there on the corner of seventy-one and Ten, but because we've got water and sewer on Tinsborough next to, uh, uh, the picture company, they bought that property there, and that's where they go. You know, the problem's all, it, it cuts out on their expenses.
Casey, what I was trying, trying to tell you though, is if we, if we annex it, we still don't have the water rights, and, and Jamesport can say, we don't want to give those to, if we buy the water rights, then the people that own the land can annex, they're not worried about the water rights, so, if you're wondering which ones to come first, you want to have the water rights first, because if you annex, and then the other people say, too bad, so sad, we want to keep those water rights, then, then they can't, you can't put a business in there because state code requires bigger lines, and they say, well, we don't want to give up. They've got the same problem over on Denver Street, where you pass across the cemetery where it comes in and goes up to the basins, that big old house on Cuck, they're on Jamesport, that whole area's Jamesport water, it's inside our city limits, but we don't have the water rights to it, so, we're going to have to probably either buy the water rights from them, or find a way around that and put in lines in different directions or something, so, I mean, I don't know how that will work.
If we knew somebody in the legislature, they could say, uh, if, if the water lines were within the city limits, you have the water rights now, if we just knew somebody that could get, get that done through the study.
Well, I'm sorry, I'm getting my ear.
Well, I think that if, uh, if you look from Denver up to, you know, uh, I don't think that's already Elwood Cut Off, but, uh, you know, maybe Gate Nine Road, uh, up that way, I, I still think that would qualify as, uh, our, our entrance into town, you know, and not going all the way further south down to, uh, you know, Highway Ten, maybe, but, uh, so if we limit that focus there as far as annexation, you know, I, I think that the judge could say, okay, we're not doing a land grab, we're just kind of looking for.
And two, that's, that's one reason that we need, that the mayor and I are going to meet with the judge and say, what are you comfortable with, what will you give us at this point right now, will you give us from Elwood to Clark Chapel, and if he says, no, but we can go here, you know, I, it's like I, I told the mayor, I said, you know, in the discussion with Fort Smith, I want to tell them we want to go right here, and then they'll say, no, you can have all of it, I can get land, or something like that, you know, but I think our meeting with the, with the judge should be, what can we do, here's what we wanted, you know, tell us what you will approve.
Did we pass the judge's hospital jail deal?
That's what I was asking.
Is that?
I was just asking.
But I think that we, as a city, would be just like, uh, Burton, and, you know, if we don't, you know, show that we're wanting to annex, and actually annex it, you know, then I think that, uh, we don't have as much negotiating value as Jamesport, you know, they'd say, well, you're just talk right now.
And we can provide fire protection, we're not having water rights, they're okay with that, we don't pass that, we want to run through by the fire. And that's, we're not going to make the money back selling water at any rate on commercial areas, because they're going to make users typically.
Right, that's the whole deal, put our fire suppression stuff in the ground, whatever, and then when the businesses come in, they say, all right, where's our water, and well, you said, well, Jamesport got provided, well, they've got three inch lines on the ground, well, heck, we'll put fifty foot lines in there, eight hundred inches around, whatever, and they can sell the water, and we'll get tax dollars off and stuff that we want, who cares about, but we don't make that much off commercial water anyway.
That's, that's one of our options, because if you spent all the money buying the water rights, you still got to go in there and put the infrastructure.
And maybe you'll make some money off selling and drinking water, give us a break on our gout.
And I don't mean to jump in too well, I'm going to jump in for a second. We're talking about, and, and, and the, the price is crazy, and I think you're both, everybody's opinion, but it's, but it's seventy thousand dollars, all right?
Seventy nine thousand, one and twelve dollars.
I know you get no.
That's just for the thirty-five.
That's just for that, so, could it be, think about it, and no answer right now, but just think about it, if eighty thousand dollars got this ball rolling. I'm not suggesting.
It's been worth less.
Maybe, maybe that's the, maybe that's the, the thing.
If I thought this city could develop thirty-five acres of retail commercial space for eighty thousand dollars, I'd vote on it right now, it's not a hundred across the road, but I'm not convinced.
The city developed it?
No, if, if us paying eighty thousand dollars to, to start for water rights, would get that done, and make that a nice difference to our city.
I'm telling you, that's a good way to start.
Well, plus, you got to have a hundred grand to get on the highway.
Cross the road, and, and technically, that should be the developer, you know, we're, we're on the best.
If he doesn't, somebody, but to me, just like Tractor, so I said, I want what's in town, I think if we go out there and annex, you know, then developers are going to say, hey, they're committed to providing fire, police protection, and sewer, you know, at some point in time, and so, they're showing, we're showing that the, the city's committed to that, and we've already annexed it.
And they're drinking water in the area, you can put all in all you want.
You know, there was a river sometime back at Walmart, was going to relocate, build a bigger store across the road, and I knew that it wasn't true, because that wasn't the city limits, and Walmart, Walmart will not build outside city limits, outside of any city limits, because they want fire protection, they want police, and they're self insured, they want police protection, they want municipal water, that's just their rule, and a lot of businesses have that, so, annexation is important key.
It's the four keys that they're looking for every time they, they have a topic, four things.
Hey, I want to suggest we move on, I mean, I was, we'll stop you guys, it's a good conversation, I think it's, but it's a good, is, I mean, that's my way of the study sessions, we can hammer this out, uh, I don't have to do other things, go, is that okay to move on?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so, I, I know Mr. Powell has a question or two for some of the department, if I'm late.
I do, uh. Chief Dawson, I notice you don't have to stand up, I can just answer that, these are real quick questions.
You do, wait there.
I notice you're, you're still taking applications for the animal control officer?
Yes.
Are you getting a lot of response? No. Okay, that was my other, my other point, we, we've kind of gone through several animal control officers, are we hanging up? Is that part of the problem, we don't seem to be able to get.
Well, I do.
Stick around.
We only have two, Joe November and Jared.
That's a way back. Animal control.
No, who's the other guy?
I just.
I know a lot of that patients are in there, and. No public patients are all requesting more than public patients.
I just wonder if that's something to do with. That's a boring job, it's very boring. And that's, that's it, uh, streets, I, I notice my neighbors been dealing with their leaves, and you're talking about brush big up, are we, uh, are we supposed to be communicating that they're supposed to be putting them in the paper deals now, will we take it if it's in the black plastic bags anymore?
We have been taking them, that, uh, the book, we, we encourage the paper, a lot of the feedbacks that I've been getting, well, I put it out there, it rains, it sucks, it's going to do this, so, when, when we eat that paper or that plastic laying there in here, cold sack, do we pick them up? Now, there is plastic biodegradable sacks, sacks, they're not near as tough as the black, but we have to pick them up.
So, we still will pick them up there?
Yes.
In place, okay, that's all I had there to say. Sonny?
Yes.
What is Stone Street Project?
That is the, uh, Shawland property out here on Highway Ten, across from, uh, Orsills.
A K, A Greenwood.
Got it, okay, uh, Nathan or, or Mr. Goldstein, the light project, what's the expected completion date?
December twenty.
Say that again?
December twenty.
December twenty, it's coming up. I think I said, I had a comment on fire, the, we have two, two Greenwood City firefighters that just got hired at one eighty-eight, one of them's sitting right here, the one eighty-eight has developed a new fire department, they shut it down, and they're sitting here, uh, my comment is, you know, in the River Valley, the Greenwood City Fire Department has been, has kind of been known as a place to go get good quality personnel, and I congratulate Wes and Green and Jared Kaufman.
That's our eight, we have eight firefighters that are on full time departments now.
That's our eight, we have eight firefighters that are on full time departments now.
Yeah, and they all started out here on Greenwood City Fire Department, we just have good high quality personnel. And then I had one more question for Wallace. So, in a perfect world, huh? If we could change state law in some way, where these, these rural water associations seem to be hauled under this hostage in small Arkansas communities.
Yes.
And if we just, uh, change state law in a way that would benefit cities that are growing and trying to grow their boundaries, what should it say?
Specifically, if we could do it in a way that doesn't make a whole lot of people upset or mad, you know, in some sort of real nice way.
One thing that you might say, if you provide drinking water, you gotta provide fire suppression water, one of both, that might be one way. And another thing, in our partic, in our particular case, they can't really service it with drinking water, I don't know whether that's an, or not, that's just one specific place, they have really bad pressure, bad lines, uh, and then maybe somehow, depending on how much they can charge you.
Well, if you're a property owner, the order two, that was on the border of the water district, so if you're on the border, what if you gave that property owner the choice between water districts? Because then you're putting the owners, the freedom on the property.
Perfect. You know, we had a state rep who wanted to have her choice with us coming to city limits, why doesn't the owner have the same choice of where they get the water?
I think that's a great idea, there ought to be a law.
Yes. Or we just knew so.
So, so we don't want Lee going in for sitting around nothing to do.
That's right.
We've got him a job.
We have, it's a whole traffic.
Hopefully, probably both rural areas.
I mean, maybe, maybe it's worth, within the city limits, if there's, if the city there's a rural district and a city, that property owner has a choice to go where they want to go.
We're talking about maybe if, if a municipality annexed into a water district, that those, all those people have the choice.
Exactly, I mean, once you come into city limits, you have a choice.
I think, uh, the two can have city limits. Right. One thing to think about, if you look, a rural water's job, that's the reason they can run three-inch lines, two-inch lines, four-inch lines, because they're called to give water to people who don't have options, who may have wells going dry or, or just don't have water. Uh, in the case of Jamesport years ago, Greenwood's boundaries was back this way, uh, even Dave's Business Center just came in not very long ago, as you know, and so they've got water lines running deep into our territory, deep into the heart of the city of Greenwood, and after a certain time, after ten years or twenty years of that, and, you know, their line's of a size, they can't provide fire protection, there should be some way of equitably settling that, and it seems like they have their lobbyists, the rural people for some reason, because they just passed new legislation that you have to compensate at, at a fair market value, the problem is, the fair market value is what are they saying in this case? So, there, there needs to be, I can see if you say, okay, we're gonna go out there and annex these two hundred acres, and they took some investment, I understand that, but before they put a line in, it's been in the ground for thirty years, and it's.
Fair market value needs to be defined on, we'll pay you ten dollars for every foot of three-quarter inch line?
I, I don't know, I don't remember, I don't know how you determine that, but the age of it and the fact that it's used up, it's useful life, everything has a life, a water takes a life, it's fifty years, a, a water line, you know, especially a three-inch line and the line they've been coming in, it's pretty well passed out coming into Greenwood, and it cuts in pretty, pretty deep. All the customers on the other side of Tinsburg, uh, around the Walmart area, they're all Jamesport, all the way down to the church and Rock Side Drive, we have a few on Rock Side Drive, they're pretty well maxed out, um, but it seems that, you know, they're, they can't provide fire, if we shouldn't want to provide water to rural customers, and they shouldn't want to provide water, so I guess the customer, that's, you gotta be some way to pass that out.
Don't ask, we're gonna listen, we're gonna do better.
There you go. Any other questions for, uh, department heads?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Tom, was, uh, on your report, you know, is there anything that you'd like to point out to us, or wants to make me aware of?
Fund balances, just so you have an idea of where we are during eleven months of the year, twelve thirty-one seventeen, the consolidated city funds was ten million sixty-one thousand. As of right now through November, the city's consolidated fund balance is eleven thousand, eleven million one hundred and six thousand, which is an increase of one million sixty-five thousand over the ending balance of the center left. We budgeted, with all of our expenses and revenues for this year, the budget was anticipating our fund balance to actually settle at nine million, nine million six fifty-seven. We're one million four sixty-eight above where our budget indicated we should be right now as of November. And there's a lot that, we talked about in the budget sessions as to why that happened, all the carryover projects didn't occur, a lot of large big items, primarily in about two or three years, specifically apartments, talk about that in the budget review session as you're aware of. City sales and use tax is right now, year-to-date, three point eight percent above what it was last year, and county sales tax is one point five percent above what it was last year. Um, we did experience in November, the, the payout for October sales for city sales and use tax was down three point one percent, as you see on your report there, still from four point five down to three point eight, that's, that's about point eight percent higher than what we actually budgeted for on a flat budget. County sales tax is actually up one percent, I believe, one point five percent year-to-date, year-over, um, which is very good, I mean, we actually were under one percent last year, so it's a little healthy right now, county sales tax, I'm very pleased with what that 's had to do. Um, so that's all being reflected as projections in the budget, if we do budget, flat, the budget, two thousand nineteen and two thousand eighteen's revenue rate. And the last but not least is, um, as we discussed in some of the budget sessions, some of you were not here, the health insurance is right now still being budgeted at a worst-case scenario of thirty-three point five percent increase. It's gonna cost the city a little over a hundred and sixty thousand dollars currently, and it's gonna have an impact to the individuals who carry the pain average. We are looking at negotiating with, um, through our VHC agent, uh, to try to get that rate down, but, um, we just heard back from another agent that's doing some other bids, bids out, they're looking right now at Etna, trying to see what they can do, and I'll address on that. So, uh, we're still looking at, uh, how we're gonna work that in, but right now the budgets are being calculated at the thirty-three and a half percent increase. Um, Lofi is also gonna carry, as you're gonna see in the last budget review session, an increase, uh, they went up one percent on us this, this year, two thousand eighteen mid-year, and they're going up another fifteen percent, uh, fifteen point one five percent rather, so police will end up at twenty-three, uh, point five percent, and fire is gonna go up one percent from nineteen point six nine to twenty, twenty-six nine, and volunteers are going up in twenty-five sixteen to twenty-five ninety, uh, for all just a month. So there's gonna be increases even in the retirements aside from Lofi, and the health insurance is going up as well, so those are all costs to the city, and that's the city's cost, not the contribution cost from the actual police officers.
In budget session, we talked about, mentioned adding franchise fees to water and sewer, did you ever have a chance?
Not yet, I'm still trying to get ready for this meeting, budget session's coming up, so it is on the radar.
But is it, uh, an observation to be made that, uh, you know, growth in the, in the city limits is going at a faster pace than outside the city limits, and the three point eight versus one point five?
Right now, it's, it's a little bit higher than it's been averaging over the last three years, uh, city sales and use tax has been year-over-year grew up about three percent, which, that's pretty good, and I, I think, yes, you can see in your chart, the change percentage year-over-year, it's been three, three point two, um, let me go back a little bit, it's been three point eight, four point two, right at two point six, two point nine, kind of, it's pretty healthy, right at about an average of three percent. So, it's where city sales and use tax inside the city is where I expect it to be, county is actually picking up, it's been a little bit lagging, you know, month over month, from, from where I stand, it's dropped last year to a point eight percent, and now it's picking back up. I, I can't explain it anonymously there, but if you'll notice, year-over-year, it's one point seven, three, three point two, and point oh eight, point eight rather, so two thousand and seventeen will be down here at the county sales tax.
Well, I want you to help my cause, if we need an annex, Tom.
That is, that is helping, but remember, the county is a pool, uh, resource for us, so it's, it's, you gotta, you gotta hope everybody else does good too, so, yes, you definitely want the city sales and use tax, you want, you want commercial enterprise here.
Well, the, the, the statement made, I mean, obviously the more traction is whether they be a place to buy your fuel on the other side of the road, or, or more pizza, or whatever the case may be, I mean, I think, I mean, people are sticking around, whether they're coming home or they're ahead, you know, before they go to Lingle or where they're going, they're spending, obviously spending on money in the city limits.
When you see the rest, the, uh, the budgets when it's consolidated, you see that after the January meeting, when after we do all the budget reviews, I give you the scenarios of what's our budgeted expenses, our budgeted revenues consolidated by department, and you're gonna see where the budgets are heading and where the costs are going, and one of the things the mayor and I sit down when we start doing the general budget is, uh, what do we do in order to head off tacking so much into the general funds and depleting over the years, the amount that's held as a resource to us, and grow the city? After, that's the only way to do it, grow your revenue base, you're gonna have to do that, you can't cut yourself, you cannot save your way to bust it, you have to spend money making, I've said that over and over and over again, the question is, when you pull the trigger? Very blunt.
All about the, I mean, you get that, scale it down, somebody look for a, uh, Mr., what's your name, son? Mr. Bell, he's not, he says, you gotta increase your revenue, I mean, and of course, he has no way of doing that until everything else is working together and big work happening in the new year and building, what if businesses, what if commercials?
At some point, somebody's gotta set something in motion to make this all work. And sit here and live off the month after month.
And one more time, for that gentleman's sake over there, just, just so you know, it's so nice to be able to go into that office and talk about things and come out with an answer. I mean, I've been involved in this, and I know you guys appreciate this, and that's the last time I'm saying that, Tom.
Okay.
Just getting old.
Way to go. So that was my, my bonus.
That is your bonus, man, boy, very pleasant. Anything else from department heads? If not, go in and pound this form.
I got some good data, I'm waiting for the man, I'm not gonna.
Yeah, you wait for the end. Harley, stoplights.
No, we're gonna, we're gonna.
And I, I've kind of turned and added these a little bit, are we hitting new ones first of all, before I say how many we got?
Yes.
Are our new ones supposed to fit in before it's in?
Yes, we're getting.
Oh, yeah, the cameras on the existing ones.
Yes.
Yep.
In the button.
We're gonna take them all out. Well, I didn't take them all out, but I just, again, I don't know how many of y'all roam around town before eight o'clock, but I just pull up there in the square and just sit there, watch this ghost traffic go up and down, lane down, there's a log tow, it doesn't need to go, it just needs to work.
Right.
It's gonna go to fix it.
You're gonna dress up. We're intending to make them work.
Okay, well, I appreciate it.
A new system. All, all, this is the longest discussion we had last time, the study, study session was either four or five. Four. Four lights.
Well, no, I, I, if there's any more coming in to a certain area, wherever it is, I would mind having, I don't say we should take, take there and they want to go, I know it's all traffic study and whatever, but it'd be nice to be able to kind of request how we'd like for it to be set up, and what I mean by that is, they just put a brand-new road enforcement that goes down and connects like seventy-one Beagle or front of World Hall, it used to be, if you plug that stoplight, again, this is about four twenty in the morning, and I pull the turn lane, everything that was green, and this arrow stayed red, or not the green yield, you know, where you can go ahead and go, if nobody's coming, you literally gotta wait for an arrow for another five seconds. So I just think if you put in a traffic signal, you gotta have that yield, left turn, I'm sure there's some police study that says, or more bankers have that, I don't care, because people want to drive, they get, I mean, you know, I don't like that field. Now, but it'd just be nice to be able to say, if we're gonna have a block come in, we want it to have the yellow, flashing solid, and the green arrows, and the flashing green, all, that we might request.
We've got two lights that the captain, the, the highway department approved, and I said for him, I won't get all this out correctly, but there's two lights that were requested, one out on Highway seventy-one in Tinsburg, which is just a caution light now, that one was approved, and then the one on Denver, and, no, a new one, no, Walmart Liberty Drive. Pardon? A new one, a new one there, those are the two.
Which end of Liberty?
Sir?
Which end of one?
Seventy-one. And I recently got a call, or we got a notice from Chad, uh, from Highway Department, Adams, saying that that's not gonna happen for at least two years, I forgot, I don't know what I got from him, uh, and, and the council approved it one time, it's been a couple of years ago, or maybe, maybe less, to focus on the one on seventy-one, Tinsburg first. Sir?
Pull the, pull the council approval.
You pulled the votes.
You pulled the votes.
I think you did. You were gone. I don't know, but, but it did, it did pass to, to pursue it, but the note, the notice I got from Mr. Adams was just, don't even think about it for another two years, isn't that right?
I'll be up there.
There you go. So, those are the only two new ones that were even being considered at any time.
I just, that's one.
But they, but, but we're, he's gonna get those fixed, the loo and all that stuff. Okay, anything else for any, oh, I'm sorry, you're in council room, sorry.
You make anything else? Cause I, if I'm done, we're gonna go home.
Go.
I'm gonna dress up in just a moment, I promise you, what is it, nine-thirty? I get the five, can't get the free records at five minutes?
Absolutely. May I, can I give you a quote from, uh, I got to speak, by the way, it's very honored, very honored to be able to speak at the Christmas Honors Enforcement Saturday, tremendous event up there from Jersey, and I encourage you to go do that, and, uh, kinda scary, you got three mayors there, you know, past, present, future, I guess, but you had Mayor Sanders going out, myself, and then Mayor, uh, Jordan McGill coming in, and he was at, I just gotta tell you this, cause he was asked to do the benediction at the end of the ceremony, which was, you know, we had a few laughs, but it was very serious, it's about the veterans and everything, and all the sacrifices, and then they laid, I forget how many thousands of wreaths in about five minutes, but anyway, Mayor McGill, Mayor McGill came to the microphone and he said, pray with me, no, he's, I'm sorry, he goes, I promise you, I'm not gonna keep you long, just like, uh, Elizabeth Taylor's eighth husband. I thought it was kinda funny, so.
He's gonna do.
He is.
So.
The table is up here.
Listen, uh, I don't have any prepared remarks, uh, which is good and bad, we just had a pretty long one, too. Uh, first of all, thank you for accommodating me this week, and me to the meeting today, uh, was legislative orientation, last week, learning how to be a legislator, turns out it's, uh, it's pretty much like a city council meeting, it's just one big, a little bigger city council meeting, lots more people, fancier digs, dress code, no denim, coat and tie, that kind of thing, uh, but it's basically just a bunch of people sitting in a room, trying to figure out how to move our state forward in a positive fashion, and that feels like what we've been doing here for the ten years that I've been here, and, uh, I've learned a lot from everyone in this room, appreciate everyone's attendance over the years, certainly all the department heads, the mayor, city clerk, the mayors, the city clerk before y'all, and all of my fellow councilmen, y'all are a great group, and I've learned a lot from each one of them. Uh, looking forward to this opportunity, the other thing I'll say I learned is that there's no way that any one person can consume all the material that they're gonna throw at you in the session, they did twenty-two hundred bills were presented last session, they passed eleven hundred of them, there are all things from education to water. And they're on things from education to water rights, to city, county, local issues, to health, health issues, and, and, you know, even in my field of healthcare, there's a, you're gonna have to lean on other folks. You know, there's no way you can be an expert in all this stuff, but the good news is, uh, I do think, you know, we're down there not sure, and, and check with me again in about four months, but it, it feels like there's an opportunity for a person to have a positive impact still. You know, it feels like there are, first of all, it's good people. I didn't mean anybody, I told Rod today when I saw him on the phone, I didn't mean anybody down there that I didn't think was smart, well-intended, didn't matter, you know, what people walked around with the Republican Democrat signs, it was just a bunch of folks markets on different parts, and they were all good people, and I, I am encouraged that there's an opportunity there to try to move us forward. Uh, there are plenty of resources, you know, that, I thought I'd have to come up with ideas of my own or research stuff of my own. There's twenty attorneys in this thing called the B L R, Bureau of Legislative Research, just at my backyard hall, I just pick up the phones, they have researched water rights for me, tell me some ideas on some bills, and so, you know, with, with the help of folks here in this community, I feel like there's a chance that something could change in the right way. So, but I can only do that if I'm gonna have the help of the folks we've had here, just like over the years with council. Nothing positive would happen to this community with any one individual of us, but, but with the efforts of all of us. So, proud of everything we've done. Uh, anyone who's interested in doing this job, it's been very rewarding, better than I ever anticipated it would be, and, uh, I'm, I'm grateful for all of the years of experience, and believe it or not, a little sad. We'll leave you all behind, we're doing something different. Gonna miss everybody, and I hope y'all pick up the phone and call me, and, and I won't be a stranger, I'll show back out. I put in my resignation for December thirty-first, so I'll still be around. I don't know that I'll promise I'll be at the budget session. But if you need me, I'll be here. Thank y'all.
Appreciate it.